Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Session for June 26th. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We did. Park out.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Pfister, could you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. I am looking, but I'm not seeing, is Katie Shadlock here? There's, there you are, Katie. Come on up. Thanks to Spokane Arts, we've got another episode of poetry at the podium. Katie Shadlock reading Crossing Bridge Street.
Crossing Bridge Street. I cross Bridge Street with ease, pass through the invisible one-way turnstile like it is a birthright, and it is. Don't you know all those townhomes are full of baby boomers from the South Hill where I was born? I cross Bridge Street like a wizard, getting on platform nine and three-quarters. I cross Bridge Street and disappear behind the one-way glass into the land of beautiful people playing volleyball on the lush lawn, a live, commercial, advertising leisure that no one in West Central can afford. I cross Bridge Street almost daily. I like the views from the trail. Kendall Yards is like my fat pants. I wish it weren't so comfortable, but it is. I cross Bridge Street back, the other way, like taking a deep breath before jumping into the deep end. When we moved in, the house behind us had a broken front window and a blanket to cover the hole with that famous Japanese print of the little boat and the enormous wave curling over it. Every time I turned the corner to come home, I'd lock eyes with the wave and wonder if this neighborhood would swamp us with sorrow or if we are the tsunami of gentrification. I ate dinner on Wednesday nights at the church across the street from my house. The volunteers ask for prayers. Mine are lofty and generalized, drawn from headlines, wispy and meaningless as clouds on a nice day. Everyone else's are dire and specific, flash floods of need and grief. And I wonder what hope there is for that street to be the bridge we call it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait before you go.
Katie.
Stay here. All right. Councilmember Cathcart's going to read that. And I believe we have someone from World Relief. And the name I have is Lisa West-Sononi.
Kristy.
Kristy, come on down to the podium, please.
Okay. Come on down. City of Spokane proclamation, whereas there are over 100 million people forcibly displaced worldwide today who are ordinary adults and children from all over the globe, forced to flee their homes and countries because of wars, human rights abuses, and fear of persecution based on their race, religion, nationality, political opinions, or membership in a social group. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly unanimously adopted on December 24, 2000, a resolution naming June 20th every year as World Refugee Day to honor the contributions, courage, and resilience of refugees throughout the world. And whereas the citizens of Spokane, supported by residents, nonprofit organizations, schools, churches, and businesses, have welcomed thousands of refugees to our community since 1990, providing intensive support to help them learn to navigate their new lives as they add economic strength and cultural richness to our community. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2023, as World Refugee Day in Spokane as a tribute to the refugees living in our city, and urge all citizens to engage in learning and appreciations of their experiences and cultures.
Yeah. Feel free.
I will never turn down the offer to make remarks. I just want to thank the City of Spokane for being so gracious and so welcoming to the refugee population. When I first went on staff at World Relief, I would be honest and tell you, I had no idea there were refugees in Spokane. But now I know them, and I know their children, and I know their stories, and I am just deeply grateful to the City of Spokane for welcoming them. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming down. All right. We have a salutation now. I'd like to invite Larry Crowder, Chief Executive Officer of the Spokane International Airport. Larry, if you could come to the podium. And I wanted to recognize Larry's wife, Robin, and daughter Lauren. And then we also have Jennifer West, who's Vice Chair of the Airport Board that I also serve on. And it gives me great pleasure to be able to read the mayor's salutation tonight. I've served with Larry for almost four years on the airport board, and it's just been a pleasure to watch a well-oiled organization lead and accomplish things, millions and millions of dollars of investment, and we just have the best airport in the whole West. So here are the words from the mayor. Whereas Larry Crowder is a 35-year aviation industry veteran and has been the Chief Executive Officer of the Spokane International Airport since 2011. And whereas Mr. Crowder has made countless contributions to the Spokane Airport, the community, and the airport aviation industry during his distinguished 35-year career. And whereas Mr. Crowder is being selected to receive the 2024 American Association of Airport Executives Distinguished Service Award. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby salute Larry Crowder for being awarded the prestigious American Association of Airport Executives Distinguished Service Award, one of the association's highest awards that recognizes and honors airport executives for an exemplary career and contributions to the airport industry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President Beggs. It's been a privilege to serve with you for four years through the accomplishments that we've had and the wonderful opportunity to continue to work hard every single day to maximize what the airports deliver for our community. But I want to say this to council, and you've, many of you have heard me say this many times, but I do say this with the greatest sincerity and the deepest humility, is truly my privilege to serve as your airport CEO. The teamwork that we have, the trust that we've developed together, to me, I believe truly, we are the best airport, not just in the West, but in the United States. And I see a very bright future ahead because of that teamwork, because of that trust that we have established together, working on some really, really important projects to advance the airports. And I just want to say again what a privilege it is for me to serve with all of you, to serve with a great team of professionals at Spokane airports and an incredibly talented and hard-working airport board with our Vice Chair, Jennifer West, attending tonight to show that kind of support for me as the airport CEO, but for the entire team. This recognition really belongs to all of us, and I am deeply grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And related to the airport, we have a board reappointment.
Reappointment of Ezra Eckhart to a three-year term on the Spokane Airport Board in advance of January's term expiration, from January 26, 2024 to January 26, 2027.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right. Mr. Eckhart is reappointed. All right. That brings us to open forum, and the rules change a little bit when we get to open forum and testimony on legislation. No longer do we have clapping and hoopla, even though it's great to celebrate what we have. We ask people for open forum. They can speak up to two minutes. We're going to take the first 15 people who signed up, but the first ones that get to go are people who haven't testified in the last count, during this calendar month. We have more people signed up than there are slots. And you can speak up to two minutes on anything related to city business that's not on our agenda for tonight and not on the advanced agenda. We don't have a meeting next week, so there is no advanced agenda. The rules for both open forum and the rest of legislative testimony are the same, other than legislative testimony is up to three minutes. But the other rules are there is not to raise your voice, pound the podium. We ask the audience, again, not to clap, not to boo, not to demonstrate. You can wear t-shirts, hats, and buttons with messages, but not actual signs. We don't, we allow, have PowerPoints if you have something you want to plug in. You can show us pictures and silent videos. We don't allow sound videos. And we don't have audience singing. Sometimes that becomes a request. We ask that you don't use any vulgarities, and we ask that you address your comments to the Chair of the meeting, which is myself, that you don't bring up litigation that you have with other parties other than the city. And I'm usually, when we get started, I will call up three people to start with. The first person to the podium, the other two to the front row to be ready to go, and then I'll refresh that. So you can come up to the front row and be ready to go right away, and that will speed up the talking and sharing rather than waiting for people to walk down. If you want to chat with people, please go out into the gallery. We have sound out there, but you'd be surprised how distracting even if you think you're speaking quietly to someone in there. And so with that, we'll start off with the first three people, Bob Horrocks, then Terry Hill, and then Kadim Rahman. All right. Bob, if you would hit star three on your phone. Are you there, Bob? Okay. We're not seeing you. Then Terry. Terry Hill, come on up. And after Terry is Kadim, if I'm saying that right. And then Sherri Barnett. Terry, welcome back to City Council. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Terry Hill. I'm a longtime Spokane resident. My religious beliefs are personal to me. They are between me and my God. I'm not here to share those beliefs with you, nor will I disguise them as city business in a veiled attempt to impose them on you. There's a time and a place for everything. The sign above the door on this building clearly says Spokane City Hall. Reasonable people that attend these meetings expect discussion, participation, and possible action on exhilarating topics like trash collection, sewer hookups, and sales tax revenue, other main, and other mundane topics needed to run a city. No one comes here expecting to hear selected scripture from cult, from a cult that worships guns and attempts to instill hatred towards people that don't think like them or look like them. My aging eyes and ears have seen a lot, and seen and heard a lot of things in my lifetime. But disguising this as city business, to paraphrase a former, former family court judge, turn TV personality, don't urinate on my leg and tell me it's raining. I yield the balance of my time.
Thanks, Mr. Hill. And I also, in a minute, I forgot that I was going to allow Jude to come up, but let's go through, let's have Kadim Rahman, Sherri Barnett, and then Jude Cormier. And please introduce yourself, because I'm not sure I'm pronouncing your name right.
My name is Kadim Rachman.
Okay.
I'm a Spokane city resident, and I'm a member of PSL, the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm speaking here today to just reiterate on some of the legislation that's happening later tonight. We're going to have a lot of talks on bills that have to do with our unhoused community.
If you're going to, if you want to talk about that, then...
I know. I'm going to be, I'm going to be done in real quick. I just want to introduce that point.
Okay. But just to be clear, so the rules are, this is not to talk about what's on the agenda.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not going to.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that Spokane, that the City of Spokane is unceded tribal land. We're living on stolen land here. And when we are proposing bills for any city, it is important to note that we do not have the authority or the right to call people illegal, criminalize them, or do anything that would prevent them from seeking shelter. I just wanted to reiterate that and present the fact that we are on stolen land here and that no, no human should be imprisoned or disadvantaged or hurt in any way for trying to live their life free. I'm going to sit the rest of my time.
Thank you so much for coming down. Sherri Barnett.
President Beggs and all members of the City Council. Now, I'm going to just divert from what I was going to say one moment, because I go to that church, and those people do not worship guns. They are loving people who rescue people from alcoholism and drug and homeless and give them homes and give them food and teach them a better way of life through Jesus. And that's all I have to say on that. I actually just want to read a prayer, and it's a prayer, this is to do with fluoridation. And I put copies of it over there. But it is prayer for your wisdom, Father God, on the matter of water fluoridation. Our Father, Creator, Maker of heaven and earth, we see your wisdom, your majesty, your love in the earth and in the cosmos. Water matters, and you made us predominantly of water. The oceans, the rivers, the lakes, they teem with life because of water. Gardens flourish with it. They die without it. Lord, you have given this area an aquifer, and that aquifer is as fine a water and pure as anyone could ask for. We declare, three times it has been placed on the ballot for a vote by the citizens. Three times the citizens have told our elected officials that we do not want fluoride in our water. We decree that those who are elected officials are to represent us as guardians of our will and of our health. And we declare that fluoridation studies have shown there are many side effects becoming more and more evident as it's studied in many cities.
Sherri. We're at the end of your time.
Oh.
Thanks for coming down.
So sad. Thank you.
All right. Jude, if you want to come up. Jude Cormier.
My name is Jude Cormier. My background is I have a BA in Special Education and a master's in early childhood. And I'm going to give you some bullet points to think about, because I was in a car accident over a year ago, and I learned a lot about our city and curb cuts. On Regal Freya, not all sidewalks have curb cut. I would be going down, and all of a sudden, I would come to a sidewalk that had no curb cut. So I had to backtrack and cross the street. So that's something to think about. I think it would be a very good idea to have in-depth study of the conditions of our sidewalks in Spokane. It's long overdue. And if you're looking for someone to hire, I'm here. On Wellesley and Division, right by Office D Pole, there is a section of the sidewalk that is like this. It's like a mountain. It's been that way for years. I would like to see that taken care of. I can't understand why no one has done that, but that's a problem. And then, when the city did work on the streets on Freya and Thor, the contractors did not clean up their messes. It was left there over winter. And, and there was the point where you could not use a sidewalk if you're on a scooter. So finally, one day, I got fed up, and I went over there, and I took my shovel and broom, and I cleaned a lot of that. I did it at least three times, and there were people that stopped to help me. Please, when you put the gravel or the sand down on the street, clean it up, because when they come with a sweeper, it's on the sidewalk.
Thank you. Your time is up, but thank you so much for making your way down here.
What?
Your time is up, but thank you so much for making the effort to come down here.
Thank you.
And, oh, there's Kelly. Okay. Great. After Jude is Eugene Knowles, and then Charlie Greenwood, and then Steve Corker. Eugene?
Eugene Knowles here. Last time I was nervous. This time I'm nervous too, because I can't do this in two minutes, but I'll give it a shot. Idea here is the homeless shelter situation. There was an article yesterday about Prince William King's son starting a program for looking at homeless. He said he liked the shelter first thing, so he has a five-year program. So the point here is that this homeless thing is not going away soon, and if future King in England decides now is the time for him to get involved. The first time I saw homeless people was 1998, when I was in Minneapolis. I was a construction worker, and I do this, did the same thing that everybody does when they don't know anything about this. I said, why don't these people get jobs? Now, because I can't do this in two minutes, I'm just going to take a couple of points here. FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. Each city ought to have some sort of crisis management, which would include homelessness, budgets, and everything that they can project what they're going to spend, because most homeless shelters are underfunded, and everybody in the country gets concerned about it, but the money goes not always to the right places. Okay, here are the final four points here. I heard the word navigator when I came one time, is a person who can pluck people out of the situation they're in and help them. Those are rare. Case management. Most shelters try, but they don't get it done. Programmers, the best programming shelter that I've ever seen or been in is UGM. They get the job done. And the shelter that we're trying to get done here in Spokane is what I call shelters of last resort. People call them low barrier. And the reason I'm speaking here today is...
We're done with your time, but thanks for coming down. It's good to see you again. Charlie Greenwood, and then Steve Corker, and then Anton Valone.
Hey, Steve. Charlie Greenwood, long-term resident of Spokane and Peaceful Valley. I'm here to address the issue of the contra lane at Main and Monroe. Three, three years ago, it was created in order to, so the city buses could turn the corner more easily, and they signed it so it was illegal to make left turns from Main eastbound, but people have done that anyway. Now they found that the, they don't need it, and they want to take it away. And as an alternative, they want us to drive around the block or head eastbound into downtown, which we find inconvenient. But human nature doesn't work that way. People will take illegal U-turns in front of the library and head northbound, or they knock down the bollards that are right in front of the library. The engineers seem to think it's necessary to squeeze a few extra cars through the intersection by adding a couple of more lanes, but I've never seen that necessary when I've been southbound. But having a northbound lane makes Kendall Yards and the whole North Side so much more easily accessible. Otherwise, if I have to go around the block or take a different direction, I might as well shop in Airway Heights or Shadle Center. And I would like to see that lane kept open. People of our neighborhood and anybody eastbound deserves to have a safe and easy way to get northbound on Monroe from Main Avenue.
Thanks for coming down, Charlie. Steve Corker, after Steve is Anton Valone, and then Alexis Tenesque.
I'm Steve Corker, and tonight it'll be easy for me to address my comments to Council President Beggs. I won't be in town for the next three weeks, and I wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate you first on your appointment to the Superior Court, and also compliment you on your years of community service to the community organizations and to the council. One of the things I've always admired about your brand is your ability to separate the personal and professional, to agree to agree and agree to disagree. And while in most of our history, we agreed on a lot of things, most things. And while in most of our history, we agreed on a lot of things, most things, the last four or five years, we've been struggling in a common cause of housing issues. And I just appreciate the fact the door was open, that you listened, and didn't let our differences keep us from pursuing a common goal. And that, to me, reflects what public service is all about. And quite frankly, we don't see enough of it. It's here at the local level in a far greater case, but I just wanted to thank you for your service and say it was an honor to know you and to work with you and wish you and your family the very best in your new job.
Thank you so much. Anton, welcome back.
My name is Anton. Hi, how are you guys doing? Okay, I just want to emphasize with each and every one who has spoken, who has a grievancy, which is a good sign that we're not all in a state of trance. There is hope, but first we have to understand what happened in the past. Yesterday is done. The question we should and need to be asking ourselves is, I know the damage is and has been for quite some time. Call it corruption or damage, it doesn't matter. The unfortunate ones, people who are suffering and struggling to make ants meat, go or get... yeah, go and get on YouTube and see there are many other talking expressions which are wrong, which is wrong, and who is responsible for that. Some of them have gathered information or pieces of information on people who are dead. We do the same thing here every Monday evening, which I personally think is quite sad. I believe each and every one sitting in this room know and think there has got to be a better way of solving a solution or a problem, such as instant coffee. Like a pain drug, it numbs the pain until it wears out. It doesn't solve the problem. The problem is how is it best and simple way to solve the problem? Change the narrative. Change the narrative, change the focus. I know I have said this before, negativity breeds negativity. It has nothing at all to do with party affiliation.
Your time's up for tonight, Anton.
Take action within ourselves and be honest and true to who we are. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Anton. Next is Alexis Tenasket, then John Hancock, and then Justin Heller. Welcome back.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Alexis Tenasket Hoyt. I will read the following excerpt from a historical text because this history is still affecting all of us in the city of Spokane today and the way we conduct business, such as providing preferential treatment to some religions over a myriad of other belief systems. On January 15th, 1493, Columbus and his two remaining ships began their return voyage to Spain. He reported to the king and queen about his voyage and the lands he had claimed in their name. Along with the prisoners and artifacts he'd taken, Columbus emphasized the presence of gold in the region. In November 1493, Columbus began his second voyage to the Caribbean region, this time with 17 ships and 1,500 colonists and conquistadors. News of Columbus's voyage spread across Europe. Pope Alexander VI issued a palpable which divided up the region between Portugal and With this, the Church provided both legal and moral sanction for the conquest and colonization of the Americas by European powers. This was called the doctrine of discovery. When they reached Hispaniola, they found that La Navidad had been completely destroyed, apparently in retaliation for outrageous carried out by the remaining crewmen. Conquistadors were necessary to invade and impose control over the Taino, while colonists were needed to exploit the resources and build the new colonies. They brought livestock and seeds from Spain to sustain themselves.
Alexis, we're at the end of your time for today. Thanks for coming down. John Hancock, and then Justin Heller, and then Dave Mack by phone. Welcome.
Toxic chemicals called PFAS were discovered in Airway Heights municipal wells in 2017 from Fairchild firefighting foam used from 1970 to 2015. The current plume of contamination affects thousands of West Plains residents, including many within the city of Spokane. Recent science has confirmed the extreme health hazards of these chemicals. Individual reports of West Plains cancers are emerging. A CDC report on blood levels of 350 Airway Heights residents has not yet been taken seriously. Washington Ecology has recently added the airport as a PFAS contaminated site after reviewing well tests previously withheld by the airport. There's big news about legal settlements between EPA, 3M, and DuPont, but because EPA specifically excludes private well owners from all its programs, this $20 billion is no help for many people in my neighborhood. How does this affect the city of Spokane? PFAS in the West Plains aquifer flows northeast towards the Spokane River. At proven West Plains concentrations, PFAS is a serious public health crisis. City representatives have PFAS accountability on the SRHD, the Airport Board, and S3R3. City of Airway Heights has proposed a new well in the Spokane River near Seven Mile. It's likely to be litigated. Groundwater safety is a key element of growth permitting everywhere, not just on the West Plains. And finally, stewardship of water, air, and nature requires regional cooperation. The West Plains Water Coalition seeks City of Spokane attention in four specific ways. Number one, protect the Spokane River from West Plains PFAS. Number two, learn and share the facts about PFAS at the airport. Number three, require transparency in the Fairchild cleanup. And number four, balance real estate development with groundwater protection. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Justin Heller, after Justin, Dave Mack, and then Rick Bochuk.
Justin Heller, I live in District One because my car got firebombed in District Two because of incompetence of the council members running it, who didn't give a flying fig about crime. Anyway, I'm here to speak about fluoride for a bit, a couple of points. My mom's a dentist and she knows the dangers of fluoride. And she said the only people who think fluoride's okay, or think fluoride's not okay, are the ones who didn't get paid. That being said, it causes skeletal fluorosis, arthritis, bone damage, osteoporosis, muscular damage, fatigue, joint-related problems, chronic and other chronic issues. In addition, exposure to fluoride is linked to Alzheimer's disease, cancer, diabetes, heart disease, infertility, and many others. If that's something you want for your constituents, so be it. I don't think that's something you want for your constituents, and I want the money out of it. I don't want you guys to profit off of the fluoride that's potentially going into the water because it's biohazard, it's waste from aluminum plants, it's not good for us. I also would like to see some of the streets that aren't paved be fixed and paved first before we have rainbow crosswalks, because I think that's a more inclusive thing that helps out everyone versus just a small percentage. And I'd also like you to give back SPD the tools they need to do their job versus debating for an hour whether or not they should have the tools and which way the tools should be and what kind of tools. Should it be hilti? Should it be Festool? Should it be Rayobi? You know, arguing over the minutia versus letting law enforcement do their job is a huge difference. You don't sharpshoot firefighters on how to do their job because they see it every day. You don't sharpshoot EMS on how to treat people because they see it every day.
Mr. Heller, right, your time. Thanks for coming down. All right, the next person signed up is Dave Mack by phone. If you want to hit star three. All right, Rick Bochuk. After Rick is Tanya Comstock.
Yeah, I know people, this is Rick Bochuk, I know people, they have issues with some of the things that are spoken here. I can't stand certain people, but we do have a constitution that speaks about freedom of speech and as long as we're not threatening anybody. Anyway, I wanted to talk about artificial intelligence a little bit. I drew a picture out there. And I kind of have fun talking to the robot there, but the robot can't replace that over there, and it can't replace my chalk art, but it does replace a lot of art. And now we're going to get into religion a little bit because there's some radical folks in this country that like to burn books and like to spew hate. But now we have the artificial intelligence that writes spells and writes prayers and embraces all religions, just like the Constitution talks about. So part of me says that there's a danger there with artificial intelligence, but there's a glory that I can see is that these creepy guys that burn books, they can't burn the artificial intelligence. I love that, you know? I don't like the idea of the Shea 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 or the John Hurt Society. I can't stand either one of them. They're supremacists. They might not say they're white supremacists, but they are supremacists because they think they're superior to everybody else around them. They think their religious beliefs are superior. Okay, somebody's talking about the works that they do. I'll compare them to Charlie Manson. Charlie Manson fed the poor and he helped people. That's what I'll compare him to. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Rick. Tanya, Comstock, and after Tanya, Sunshine Wigan. Welcome, Tanya.
Thank you. I think that right now, when the school starts up, the schools need to talk about, teach the students about the laws here in the states. And they should teach them, you know, about the driving too, the driving laws here. And then they should show them, have videos to people what they do to other people out here too, and the jobs that they have too, you know? Because some kids though, they don't, they don't, they might not know about it, about the jobs that we have out here too. And the schools need to take them out, you know, and show them about the jobs, you know? And they should teach them, take them to the colleges, you know, if they want to learn more when they get out of high school too, you know? And they should teach them about like, about being lawyers and police officers and stuff.
Thanks for coming down, Tanya. Sunshine, come on up.
Sunshine Wigan, Spokane, Washington. So I came here to talk about something totally different, but then I was like, oh, okay, that got resolved. I want to say thank you to the city council, number one, for always, when I bring up an issue and I call you guys or something, you guys are there to help. And I want to say thank you for the public apology from Bingo because I feel honored that he felt comfortable enough to use me as an example. Yeah, I think it's important to keep them neutral. But so I am gonna say, up there by Lincoln Heights, the school, the elementary there, I get road-raged there a lot. And I'm noticing, and I love this, that there is a lot more cop presence up on the South Hill now. As I am a delivery driver, I do 10 to 18-hour shifts, so I see a lot of things. And this is one of the spots that I get road-raged the most is from 29th down to where it turns into Freya, so all down that road right there. And so now you guys have put the, which I love, where they take the pitcher by the school, by Ferris. But so now they're road raging further up by the Target instead. Like if you go to the speed limit, they will get mad at you, flip you off, and go around you and stuff. But I just want to say also that I think that everybody deserves housing. And I don't appreciate when people that do housing for people, when they set the people up to fail. That's really disheartening to me because I don't want to see anyone homeless for any reason. And...
Sunshine?
Thank you.
Your time's up. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
What's your dog's name?
Oh, this is Blossom. This is Blossom.
There's a dog in there?
Yes. She's always in my bag. If you ever see me with my bag, she's with me.
She's a guard dog, huh?
Yeah. Thank you, you guys.
Great, thanks. All right, that brings us to the end of open forum. Ms. Fister, if you could read the consent agenda, which is quite lengthy. We have five people signed up to testify. Rick Bochuk, Sunshine Wigan again.
14 on your open forum.
Oh, wait. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I'm corrected. Zach McGuckin then, come on up. Rick, you're not up yet, sorry.
For open forum still?
Yeah, yep, I miscounted.
Hello, my name is Zachary McGuckin, and I'm a member of PSAL, the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I really quickly want to talk about Hoop Fest. Hoop Fest this year was set up not entirely, but in part by prison labor. I know Hoop Fest is a private company, but they are using a public park, and so they had prison labor working in that public park. And I think that we need to ensure that everyone who worked this past Hoop Fest gets compensated fairly, at least minimum wage. And if the company is not willing to do that, I think the city should step in. I think you all have a responsibility, considering Hoop Fest's contribution to our city's economy. I think you have a responsibility to make sure that those who didn't have a choice but to work and set it up get paid a reasonable wage for their work instead of... Normally, prison labor receives a couple cents an hour, but from my understanding, they do not receive any compensation. So that is the first thing I want to discuss. And then the second thing is that I would like the city of Spokane to join the hundreds of cities and community organizations who have just signed this petition to remove Cuba from the list of state sponsors of terrorism. We have declassified government documents that specifically say the US aggression towards Cuba is to make the life of everyday Cubans so miserable that they go back to being a US colony. And I think that the city of Spokane, you all in your positions, have a responsibility to use your power to ensure that we are a peaceful city and a peaceful country and that we're not vested in the destruction of other nations and the subjugation of the working and oppressed people of the world. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now, but you're not going to speak yet, but I'm just telling you, you're going to be first up, but consent agenda.
Council President, can we take 16 separate?
Yes. If you could do 16 separate.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, set hearing before city council for July 10, 2023, and proposed initiative 2023-4, petition signatures filed on behalf of Brian Hanson, petitioner regarding prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities. Number two, value blanket increase with Galls LLC for the Spokane Police Department procurement of ballistic body armor utilizing Washington State contract number 03720, $65,000. Number three, five-year blanket with Coleman Oil, Lewiston, Idaho for the purchase of renewable diesel for fleet services using Washington State DES contract number 08721, not to exceed $2 million. $2,750,000 per year. Number four, revenue contract with Fat Beam LLC to permit Fat Beam to use interduct in the city's conduits for a 10-year term effective upon both parties' signature with a five-year renewal option, estimated annual revenue of $120,000, deferred from June 5, 2023 agenda. Number five, contract amendment extension with Insight Global LLC to provide a contract employee for network engineer support, extending term through December 31, 2023, $60,800. Number six, contract renewals with A. Mitchell Humphrey for annual maintenance and support of city's financial management system from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, $94,170 plus tax. B. SLA Incorporated for annual maintenance and support of the city's permitting and licensing software from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025, $195,842.96, year one, and $208,572.75, year two. Number seven, contract extension with JRP Integrated Solutions LLC, St. John, Washington, allowing a consultant to continue to assist with the expediting fiber, expanding fiber broadband service and infrastructure to some of Spokane's most vulnerable high poverty communities, $75,000 in previously approved ARPA funding. Number eight, low bid of Cameron Riley LLC, Spokane, Washington, for the Driscoll Alberta Conquerance Sidewalk Project, $1,945,231.25. An annual administrative reserve of $194,523.13, which is 10% of the contract price will be set aside. Audubon Down River Neighborhood, deferred from June 12, 2023 agenda. Number nine, low bid of Shamrock Pavilion Incorporated, Spokane, Washington, for the Strong Road Five Mile to Cannon Maintenance Project, $969,000. An administrative reserve of $96,000, which is 10% of the contract price will be set aside, Five Mile Neighborhood. Number 10, contract renewal with ESO Solutions Incorporated for annual subscription fees for the incident record management system, $88,446.2 annually. Number 11, accept additional funding from the Administrative Office of the Courts to support the Domestic Violence Intervention Therapeutic Court Program. Additionally, the grantor approved a real allocation of estimated grant expenses, $153,647.84. Number 12, amendment and restated under local agreement with Spokane County for the Northeast PDA encompassing property located in the joint planning area. Number 13, multiple family housing property tax exemption conditional agreements with A. River City 4 LLC for the future construction of approximately four units at partial numbers 35103.1213 and 35103.1212, commonly known as 2901 East Baldwin. B. River City 4 LLC for the future construction of approximately four units at partial numbers 35103.1212, commonly known as 1912 North Regal. C. Crandall, Gary L., and Pamela M. for the future construction of approximately six units at partial numbers 3512.1917, commonly known as 1427 East First Avenue. D. 1517 South Grand Boulevard LLC for the future construction of approximately six units at partial numbers 35292.2511, commonly known as 1517 South Grand Boulevard. E. TZ Kids LLC for the future construction of approximately four units at partial numbers 35212.1916, commonly known as 1423 East First Avenue. Number 14, approval to utilize program, year 2021, Annual Action Plan Project, number Neighborhood Community Development Program, a program year 2022, AAP Project, number Neighborhood Community Development Program, CDBG, funding allocations in addition to the 2020 Program Year Project, Neighborhood Community Development Program, $8,490,884. Number 15, authorize the fifth and final year of award recommendations from the CHHS Board and COC Board for public services and housing stability grant funds, including authorization to enter an agreement with various funders and grantees, $7,059,056. Number 16 will be considered separately. Number 17, contract renewal, number two of two with Frank Gurney Incorporated, Spokane Valley, Washington, for needed on-call guard rail or repair services, not to exceed $100,000. Number 18, contract amendment or renewal with TransMap Corporation, Columbus, Ohio, to collect automated pavement assessment and sidewalk infill data, $97,513.93. Number 19, report of the mayor of Penney A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through June 9, 2023, total $15,297,633.74, with Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $14,600, excuse me, $14,674,040. B. Claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through June 16, 2023, total $9,568,246.80, with Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $9,188,129.24. C. Payroll claims of previously approved obligations through June 10, 2023, $9,175,104.78. Number 20, city council meeting minutes for June 5, June 8, June 15, and June 22, 2023.
All right, all those in favor of approving everything but item 16 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, no?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, those are approved. If you would read number 16.
Number 16, amendment extension to agreement with Superior LLC as the sole source provider of Cry Wolf software that the police department uses for administration of the false alarm program, $440,000 estimated revenue.
All those in favor of approving item 16 indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, no?
No.
Any abstentions? All right, that is also approved. And we have, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't take the public comment, but I will take the public comment. My apologies. Rick Bochuk, then Sunshine Wigan, then Will Huelings.
I noticed you have this thing that says, "Set hearing before city council," that's talking about prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities. And you're going to talk about it on July 10th. But they don't put in the sex offenders. That's what I have a really big problem with, you know? Because he wants to prohibit encampments, but they don't talk about sex offenders being in the parks, sex offenders being by the daycare centers downtown Spokane, some of the worst ones, the actual child rapist. And so I think that it should be pointed out to them, well, you guys are going to get rid of the encampments, and you need to put in sex offenders. They don't need to be belonging next to these people. It happens down here by the plaza, nothing is done about it. They say they're protected. How can they be protected when they're around children and they've been, they've raped children? Why are they protecting these people? They need to be isolated. Stay away from the downtown area, stay away from parks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Sunshine, and then Will Huelings, and then Maygrah Flatman by phone, and then Justice for All. Welcome.
Sunshine Wigan, Spokane again. I'm glad that we're trying to do this. I strongly believe in this. I went into camps and signed people up for housing for over 10 years, and the things I see in those camps, I wouldn't want them around my grandchildren and things while they're at school, things of that nature. So I just want to say that I'm in support of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Will Huelings, then Maygrah Flatman, then Justice for All.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Will Huelings, another downtown Spokane. I am for ordinance C. 36402. Living downtown, I could walk out my apartment building that I pay, you know, lots of money to live, but--
Well, so this is consent agenda. Are you--
Oh. Oh, is this, I'm sorry, I got mixed up. Is it the LGL?
It's all those 20 items.
Under consent.
Well, I got the legislative, the LGL 2023 0027.
Yep.
Is that what, oh. Well, this is prohibiting camping encampments near schools, parks--
Okay, yeah, that's setting a hearing for that. Yeah, that's coming up on the 10th, but you can talk about setting the hearing.
Oh, well, they signed me up. I thought it was okay to speak about it.
Okay.
I'm for it, obviously, because, I mean, I could walk out my apartment and there'd be some guys smoking their fentanyl camped out by my entrance, you know, and it bothers me, you know? If I had my daughter or my child, I mean, not just that, I live downtown and there's signs, the city paid a lot of money to put up signs that say no camping underneath the railroad via ducts. Do you think anybody obeys them signs? I still walk past people smoking out of their crack pipes, smoking off the foil, blocking the whole sidewalk, so I have to walk out in the street. Now, if somebody's going to steam plant or some business over there, what do you think they, what, think they think about Spokane? Walking past a bunch of tweaked-out, drug-ed out drug addicts doing drugs. So I'm for this. Thank you.
Maygrah Flatman to call in? If you want to hit star three, Maygrah? All right, Justice for All.
Sorry, Council President, is Maygrah not online? She sent us an email earlier about an unheard council testimony. I think she might have been signed up for open forum.
Might have hung up.
Okay.
We could try again.
Maygrah, I'm sure, is trying to get back online. I highly doubt Maygrah doesn't want to speak. So we already know what you're going to vote on number 16. I just think how that was worded is completely not really how we should see it. It says it's saving $440,000 about, but it's just talking about the man-hours that are going to be lost if the system wasn't in place. The system is very expensive for what it is, but, you know, you already voted on it, basically, so why should I talk about it? For number one, that's also very misleading. The proposal that's coming up for, to vote, for voters in November is actually 40% of the map. I don't know if you've seen the map, but how are we going to have enough signage to even do that? I know just outlawing homelessness is trying to make homelessness not exist, but that does not make homelessness not exist. Again, as I've talked about before, people who are rent burdened are, you know, it's the easiest thing to coordinate how people become homeless. Right now, of course, everyone thinks it's about protecting children, and it's, that's how it's worded. Everyone cares about children. There's no one who's advocating that children shouldn't be safe, especially from predators. But as we look at this ordinance and we see how much of the map that it actually fills out, the truth is, who is this actually attacking? And of course, it is attacking our unhoused community as everything else the city council passes. We are also spending $65,000 on body armor for canines and police officers. That was not specified in the public safety meeting, and if the police are going to be requesting money, they should be talking about it in the public safety meeting so that people know what's going to be coming up ahead, so we can, you know, talk about it, so we can know how our officers want to be safe. It's just simple things. And how often is this body armor going to be used? That's also data that we should always be collecting. If you're giving the police money, you should be getting data back. That's how we do make the city safer, by tracking all of this information. Unfortunately, we hardly do that. If we're spending money on public broadband, we should also make sure that public broadband, or spending money on any kind of internet infrastructure, then we should make it public. It should be public already. We spent so much money on building so much of it out. I know that's something the county wants to do, but it's something that the city should do. Right now, the Wi-Fi in here is also terrible. It kicks you off every, what, like, three minutes? Come on. Like, yeah. On number 11, I highly support that. We should definitely have Administrative Office of Courts to support Domestic Violence Intervention and Therapeutic Court Program. That is fantastic. When it comes down to sidewalks, like that one lady mentioned in open forum, yeah, that's great that you're improving the Audubon Down River Neighborhood, but all sidewalks are terrible in Spokane, and they all need massive repairs. It's not a walkable city. We don't even have, like, grocery stores spread out at all. Let's make sure we fix all of, all the sidewalks, not just the nicer neighborhoods. The ones that we might live in as well.
That's three minutes. But thanks for coming down. And my apologies for getting the vote before the comments, but I appreciate those comments. Maygrah, we're still trying to connect, but we're not seeing you.
She says she's there, but I don't see any hands up on my--
All right, do you want to hit star three again? Maybe it'll--
Can I mute them all?
Oh, is she on there? No.
Probably one of the call-in people. Is she calling or on the webex? Calling in, but it still comes through webex.
On number one, 40% of the map is the, to ban where the homeless can stay, that's an incredibly large amount of the city. And just putting up signs isn't going to help with where these people can go. It's starting to become extremely hot outside. The parks are being criminalized, and there's nowhere for the homeless to be able to get to if 40% of the city is unavailable to them. Number two, the $65,000 extra dollars in additional spending for the body and canine armor. Like Justice said earlier, we need to hear this in the public meetings in order to understand why this is necessary instead of just writing blank checks, but it was already approved. So we support the Domestic Violence Therapeutic Intervention Programs. These programs are extremely good, and we need them to help all the domestic violence people. On number 15, we definitely need money to go to the CHHS. We need money to go into programs for the homeless, and we need money to go into these things. The biggest question I have is that it's asking for $8,490,884, but in the eight listed programs, only $407,308 of that is listed out as for these programs. So there's over $8 million that isn't put towards anything, and while we definitely need $8 million in the system, we definitely want to make sure that it's going to the homeless and helping the homeless and not just pocketing certain people's, not just lining certain people's pockets. Thank you.
Hey, Maygrah, can you stay, stay on for a minute?
Yes.
I, have you signed up for resolution 0048, which is a setting a hearing for the vacation of an alley? Is that something you wanted to testify about?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to have--
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, stay on the line, I'm going to have Ms. Fister read that one right now since I have you, and then I'll let you testify on that.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution 2023-48, setting hearing before the city council for July 31, 2023, for the vacation of the alley between Fourth and Fifth from Washington to Bernard, as requested by CAS on West Fourth LLC.
All right, and then, Maygrah, you have up to three minutes to testify about that.
Okay. I had questions about what this was vacating, because it looks like it's vacating the alley from Fourth and Fifth from Washington to Bernard. Is this vacating homeless encampments? Is this vacating government property? Is this, it's not very clear when reading through the papers what this is vacating, but if it is vacating the people between Fourth and Fifth from Washington to Bernard, there is no shelter space available. With Cannon Street Shelter closed, only Hope and Trent Track Shelter are the only places that are low barrier for adult women above the age of 24. Hope is full, it's continuously full, it's full on the Shelter Me Spokane website, it was full last night. Trent Track Shelter, which is inaccessibly located away from bus stops and downtown, is last updated June 23rd, and it has only six beds available out of 350. And it says it's 2% of the, less than 2% of the beds are available. And again, this is inaccessible, far away. And so if we're vacating alleys of human beings, we need somewhere for them to go. They need to have shelter, especially with the upcoming heat, and we can't just remove them without having suitable accommodations. Thank you.
And I'll just, we don't usually respond to people, but we can answer, we can provide information. My understanding from the presentation from staff is this is a very narrow alley. I don't believe there's anyone camp there, but they're going to put, build new housing, workforce affordable housing in that area, and they need to encroach a little bit on the alley. So half of the alley is still going to be usable as an alley, and the other half is going to be part of a lot of new housing units, so.
Ah, thank you for that. It was very confusing. We appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, and then I also have Justice for All testifying on this. Oh, he's good? All right, any council commentary on this resolution, setting the hearing? All right.
On which one, the vacation?
The vacation. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that passes, and then we can go back to the top of the resolutions.
Resolution 2023-46, approving the appointment of Jacoby Byrd as the director for the Spokane City Council.
There is no public comment requested. Any council commentary? Councilmember Stratten?
I just want to publicly thank Jaco--
I just want to publicly thank Jacoby. He stepped in when Hannah Lee had to resign, and you have done an amazing job keeping us all sane. I don't think people realize the amount of work it takes just between the clerk's office and the city council office and the mayor's office and the paperwork and all of that. And you've done an amazing job, and I appreciate everything you do for us. So thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Kinnear.
Yeah, I would just concur. I really appreciate Jacoby and everything he's done since stepping up into this new role, and just want to encourage you to keep it up and don't screw it up, so.
All right. Councilmember Kinnear?
Thanks. Just want to say that Jacoby's worked for me as my assistant for almost four years, and it's been a wonderful four years. I am so glad to see him go into this position. I think the council will be in good hands going forward with him directing operations. And I agree that nobody knows all the stuff that goes on behind the scenes to actually make all of our meetings work. It's so much more involved now with the virtual piece and with all that's required of us, all the rules and so forth that we need to abide by. So having Jacoby overseeing that, making sure that we're staying, doing what we're supposed to do, between him and Chris Wright, I think we're going to be in good hands. Thank you.
And one more thing. He's wearing a really cool pair of socks tonight. So if you get him down there alone, make him show you his socks.
All right. This is why Hannah Lee Allers avoided any goodbyes. But I do, I also just want to add that the Director of the Office of City Council position, one, didn't exist a few years ago, and it was a much smaller council office and a lot less going on. And first of all, Hannah Lee stepped up to that and really created that, and Jacoby all along has been her chief assistant, learning. And so when she retired, he stepped right into that role. You stepped right into that role, and it was seamless, didn't miss a beat, and you support so many people behind the scenes and sometimes visibly, and also work across the hall with the mayor's office and the administration, countless people who try to navigate our roles to get stuff done. So, well deserved, and I'm very glad that I bequeath you in this position to the rest of council, even after I'm gone. So thank you. And with that, prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, next.
Resolution 2023-47, setting hearing before the City Council for July 31, 2023, for the vacation of Conklin Street, south of Eighth Avenue, as requested by Spokane Housing Authority.
Okay. And there's no public comment? Any council commentary? All those who are prepared to vote? Councilmember Kinnear?
Resolution 2023-49, approving the appointment of Jessica Stratton as the Director of Management and Budget for the City of Spokane.
All right. And same for Reese? Reese Atwood signed up. We think he signed up really to talk about rules in the park.
I see his name on here. Could you have him hit star three?
Okay. Reese, if you want to hit star three? Are you there, Reese? Reese Atwood? Am I saying that right? Says you're unmuted on our end, but we can't hear you. All right. Just confirming that Justice and Rick wanted to talk about a different issue, so let any council commentary on the appointment of Jessica Stratton? Councilmember Stratton?
Well, I think Jessica Stratton has an amazing last name. I just want everybody to know she is not related to me in any way.
Are we done with consent agenda in open forum? Because I signed up, and I'm just not sure if I'm following this.
Come up and talk to Jacoby for a second. Okay. Good name. Sorry.
Good name.
Councilmember Kinnear is reminding you to really speak into your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. All right. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear? Congratulations, Jessica. You've been doing a great job, and you deserve this official appointment. All right. Next resolution on livability in the Logan neighborhood.
Resolution 2023-50, relating to improving livability in the Logan neighborhood near the city's water department and recognizing the new middle school use adjacent to the site.
Council President, since this was added, does this need to be read?
I believe it does, and I apologize. I didn't have it out of the folder, so just give me a second here. Okay, I'll read this resolution in its entirety. Resolution number 2023-50, resolution relating to improving livability in the Logan neighborhood near the city's water department and recognizing the new middle school use adjacent to the site. Whereas the city's water department is located at 914 East North Foothills Drive in the Logan neighborhood, and whereas the water department has owned and operated out of this site since at least 1900. And whereas in 2019, the City of Spokane and Spokane Public Schools entered into a partnership agreement to deliver new and renovated public school facilities, library facilities, and recreational facilities. And whereas that partnership included the transfer of property on the east side of the water department site to SBS for a new middle school. And whereas meanwhile, in a similar timeframe, the city also sold another portion of the water department site at the northeast corner of North Foothills Drive and Nevada Street to Catholic charities for the construction of 72 units of affordable housing. And whereas the sale of this property also required the construction of a new employee parking area on another portion of the site. And whereas combined, these changes led to the relocation of dirt stockpiles from repairs done on the water system to a location along Marietta that is more visible than before. And whereas employees haul this material to the site to be screened and reused on future repairs. And whereas some work occurs in late night or early morning hours, before it often stems from the need for emergency work to repair main breaks. And whereas Logan neighborhood residents have experienced the negative impacts that have come from these relocated operations, including noise, dust, and aesthetic issues, and have shared these concerns with council members. And whereas lack of pedestrian facilities connected to city-owned property in the neighborhood have further neighborhood, neighbor frustrations with the site. And whereas the Logan neighborhood is located in an area of Spokane which has been subject to historical underinvestment. And whereas the current site of these activities is inconsistent with the revitalized nature of this area, that has resulted from the new school and new housing. And whereas with the support of new uses in this area, the city council intended to improve the livability and desirability of this location, improve equity in the Logan neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Spokane intends to move the dirt stockpiles and related screening operations from the water department site out of this neighborhood. Be it also resolved, city council is requesting that by September 1, 2023, the Public Works Department suggest an alternative location where these operations could more reasonably exist, and a plan to address the lack of a sidewalk on Marietta adjacent to water department property, and as well as any additional mitigations necessary for the neighborhood. Be it further resolved, the city council is committed to engaging with any neighborhood across the city to ensure municipal operations have limited negative impacts.
All right. There's no requested public comment. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll just start. So several months ago, weeks, we started getting some input from some of the neighbors around the site, around Yasahara Middle School, with concerns around just operations going on in the water department parcel next door to the middle school. And Councilmember Bingle and myself went out and took a look at it, and it really just, anybody, I think, going by would look at it and say, this is not compatible with a neighborhood or being next door to a school. It really is a heavy industrial use, large mounds of dirt being moved around, being brought in and out of the site. And really, there's no, there's no end in sight. This is sort of a continuous operation that would just go on in perpetuity. And so talking with the neighbors, talking with the water department, Public Works, and us kind of collaborating, you know, we, I believe, have an agreement by the administration to move these activities, and so this resolution is really just to kind of inform that. They're supposed to bring a plan back by September 1 as to where these activities could safely and properly be moved. And then also addressing the lack of sidewalk infrastructure on the city-owned parcel where kids do walk and do transit to school. So it really is kind of a lot of different issues all in one, and hopefully we'll be able to get this taken care of very promptly, especially with kids going in and out of that school on a regular basis. So I appreciate just all the help from Marlene Feist, our Public Works Director, Lawrence Frill, the Water Director, Water Department Director. You know, a lot of help, a lot of input. Thanks to Councilmember Bingle for his support and help on this. I think it's going to make, hopefully, a big difference in the livability of that neighborhood. So happy to present this.
Thank you, Councilman Cathcart, for all the heavy lifting on this. We did go out and take a look at it, and it was clear that there was an issue there, and that water site, I think, is the oldest water site in the city. It's, I mean, it's been around for a long time. And one of the things that we know is the amount of dust in the air causes a significant amount of health problems, and we see that with dirt roads throughout the city. But having a giant dirt pile by a brand-new middle school and in, you know, the heart of a neighborhood does present some real challenges to the people who live there. And so it makes a ton of sense for us to move it out of there. It's no longer suitable for this use. And so again, thank you to administration, to Councilman Cathcart for all of his hard work here in getting this done, and it's the right thing to do, and I'm glad we're doing it, so.
All right. And I also want to thank the neighbors who contacted us and got action. All right. With that, prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. That's seven to zero.
Ordinance C36349, vacation of the west three feet of Conklin Street, south of Hartson Avenue, as requested by Harold and Heather Vanderpool. First reading held January 9, 2023.
All right. And there is no requested public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven to zero. And then I was going to have you do C36399 next.
Okay. Relating, Ordinance C36399, relating to the regulation of illegal activities in public spaces and repealing Chapter 10.76 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
All right. So we do have a few public commenters on this. You can make your way up. John Alder is first, and then Kristin Schuler, and then Will Hewlings. Just by way of teeing it up, you might recall that the legislature had sunsetted their drug possession laws, but they adjourned their regular session without fixing anything, which meant that on July 1, there would be nothing in place, and cities all over the state were coming up with their own things. And the City of Spokane passed an ordinance that was designed to predict pretty much where the state would go, kind of in between the extremes of it, in hopes that the legislature would follow Spokane on that. And indeed, Senator Bilig encouraged us and signed off on the version that we produced. We debated a lot and passed it, and it was in place, but then the legislature went back into special session and sure enough, did pass something that goes into effect next week. And that means, but it is slightly in conflict with our laws, and so in the vice of city legal, we're repealing, so everyone will just be under the uniform state law in those regards. But with that, I'll turn it over to John Alder.
Which one am I speaking on now?
This is the repeal of the city's drug possession laws in favor of the state ones that were passed a few weeks ago. You have up to three minutes.
Okay. Well, again, this is, what we probably need instead, I was, I was, I'm just informed, but what we probably need to think about is anything that encourages treatment for these people. And instead of finding ways to have them arrested or go in jail, because there's never any care for, by, for them in jail. There needs to be treatment and just better support for them. Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure about that. Okay, that's all I can say about that.
Thanks for coming down, John. After John is Kristin Schuler, Will Hewlings, and then Maygrah Flatman by phone. I thought I saw Christine. Yeah, Christine.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's all right.
I thought you said there was a John next.
He just went.
My name, my legal name is Christine Schuler. My true name is Seven. I live in Spokane. About this, it's called illegal, regulating illegal activities in public spaces. And I heard you talk about, it's all about the drug use and stuff, but it's just very frustrating to see a phrase like that. Regulating illegal activities in public spaces should be the same as private spaces. There shouldn't be a difference. If it's an illegal activity, then it's illegal everywhere, public spaces, private spaces. You know, so it's just, it's frustrating that you name it that, that like, some illegal activities are okay in some public spaces, and it shouldn't be that way. And so if this is just focusing on drug use or illegal drug use, you know, if it's a legal drug, or what somebody may call a drug, and it's legal in a public space, then there's not a problem. You know, there's already regulations on where alcohol can't be, you know, consumed and places where it can. And so it's just very frustrating that you have that. You should understand the difference, regulating illegal activities in all spaces, public or private. And so if it's about drugs, then, you know, that's a great place for the psych jail. Frontier Behavioral Health, if there's rules that say, oh, we can't arrest them. We don't want to arrest them. They didn't, they're not, you know, even though it's an illegal activity, which is a crime, that, you know, if you just can hand out a ticket of some sort. And the other man that was up here talking was about the need for helping rehabilitation, and that doesn't happen in jail. Jail doesn't rehabilitate anybody who's addicted to cigarettes or, you know, legal substances or illegal substance. So if it is illegal, that's a great place for the mental health, behavioral health, red flag. Instead of picking up people who own guns that committed no crimes at all, or picking up people to force them 90 days in a psych jail because they're a conservative in a very liberal Spokane, using their free speech, and some people don't want to let conservatives have their free speech. And people have been being sent to psych jail for free speech of being a conservative in a very liberal town. So let's utilize some of that. Maybe put them in the, you know, send them to the psych jail for illegal activities in public spaces, because it's illegal.
Thanks for coming down, Christine. Will Hewlings, and then Maygrah Flatman by phone, and then Justice Frall. Welcome back, Will.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings. I live downtown. I guess I'm going to have to agree with Brian Beggs and Ms. Kinnear on this ordinance. Something needs to be done. There needs to be some kind of regulations on illegal activities. I mean, there's, like Christine mentioned, there are lots of legal activities, but the one that I've noticed the most downtown is legal drug activities. And it's very open, like, you know, it's, and to the points where, I mean, something needs to be done, because these people, and this is what I've noticed from living downtown, I don't think they care because they've been allowed to do what they've done. And I mean, I understand that maybe they have a habit or something, and I'm... And, I mean, I understand that maybe they have a habit or something, and I'm all for treatment. But just allowing people to fester in parking lots, like by my, where I live, is not cool because all that leads to is a bunch of adults sitting there doing drugs. And then, you know, the next thing you know, they're fighting. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that happens. You've heard people talk about it. But that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Maigra, if you want to hit star three.
... until the host calls on. You're unmuted. Spokane's drug crisis will not...
Okay, welcome.
Spokane's drug crisis will, oh, thank you. Spokane's drug crisis will not be solved by punitive measures such as jail. Data from the Bureau of Justice Assistance proves that addiction treatment reduces recidivism. Data from the National Drug Court Institute concurs with this. Data from reports that Spokane has paid for, such as the 2008 Bennett Latin Consulting Report and their 2020 update, agree with this as well. Data from the JFA Institute, which is also data that Spokane County paid for, mentions the abnormally high jail population from nonviolent drug use. In 2001, Portugal decriminalized the consumption of drugs. Since then, their rates of drug use and drug-related deaths have remained below the EU average. This is because, along with decriminalizing drugs, there was an increase in addiction treatment. By treating drug addiction as a compassionate addiction problem and not as a punitive criminalization problem, by offering counseling and healthcare treatment services, Portugal is leading the world in approaching drug abuse. Drug treatment saves, addiction treatment saves lives, jail does not rehabilitate, jail continues to kill. Thank you.
Thank you, Maigra. And now, Justice Rorle. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Justice Rorle, Spokane city resident. There's a lot of great quotes about this one that I think are very interesting when this was passed. One of them was from Beggs, who said that there's not much of a difference between a gross misdemeanor and a misdemeanor, but that's a 270% increase in time. Karen Stratton also said, once we pass the laws, this is out of our hands. It's then up to the mayor and the police, which I feel like is letting go a lot of accountability for a law that you passed, that now you have to redact because the city or the state-level law now trumps what you, the law that you passed earlier. It's terrible that that was passed in the first place. You had so many groups, including The Way to Justice, who was here that same month advocating not to do that same thing. Did you listen to that group? No. At the state level, we know we can't really do much about that. But it's funny how City Legal is telling you, you have to redact all this because, you know, of the clash. Of course, Spokane has jumped the punitive gun and made sure to take the most punitive measure it could against our unhoused community. Yeah, really great work, Spokane. For those that don't know, that basically was passed a couple of months ago, before the state level, a law was passed, and that's why we're in the situation we're in now. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, this is us just bringing our law on drug possession and drug use into alignment with the state law. And I do actually want to applaud this council. The state law that was passed was largely based on the one that we passed here in the city of Spokane. And I thought that was a great meeting of the minds where we came together, and there was a fair amount of compromise on that one that happened, that I thought produced some good policy for the city and now for the state. And for that, I think that we, as a council, should be proud of what we did because there was a lot of inaction in the state. People were worried to take a stance. We took a stance, and the state followed. And so, I think you guys all did a great job on this, and I think we should be proud of it. And I'm happy to support this one today. It's not as, the state laws aren't as punitive as the ones that we passed. But I think that this is a good piece of policy for the city of Spokane, and it's going to be a good thing for the city.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. I do want to commend Mayor Matsu for working with us to craft this prior to the state coming out with their version and passing their version, and also working with Senate Majority Leader Andy Bilig so that, as Councilmember Bingle said, we had a meeting of the minds. And we are required to follow state law. So, we cannot go our own direction after they passed their fix to the Blake decision. So, again, I think we did a good job on this, and it was hard fought, as you all remember. It was a lot of compromise. And I think we have a good, a good law here. So, I appreciate everybody's work on this.
All right. Any other commentary? Prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Pass the six to one. And that brings us to C 36394.
Ordinance C 36394 relating to parks, amending section 12.068.040 of the Spokane Municipal Code concerning park rules and regulations.
All right. We have plenty of people to testify. Do any of the sponsors want to tee this up? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of things, and then if Councilmember Stratton or Bingle want to add, feel free. I mean, there's a lot of folks, I think, who've kind of played a role in bringing this together. But first and foremost, the Parks Board. And last October, the Parks Board passed a resolution asking this council to consider this change. And it's taken a bit, but here we are, and we're considering this to help protect the community, protect our neighborhoods, protect our parks, and glad that we've gotten here. I wish this was, I believe this deserves to be, one of the few ordinances that actually deserves to be an emergency ordinance. Unfortunately, that's not the case. But that being said, I think we can pass a law that makes sense, that actually gives a tool back to our officers that has been taken away to enforce the rules in our parks after hours. And I want to thank, I especially want to thank Captain Tom Hendren for his input on this. He has been, I think, just provided a wealth of information on the lack of our officers' ability to enforce under the existing codes and existing state laws, and why this change is absolutely necessary for the safety and well-being of our neighborhoods. Most of our parks are in our neighborhoods. So, I'll leave it there. I'll probably add some more after commentary. But this really is about enforcing the hours of our parks. It's not about, doesn't have anything to do with daylight. I've seen some odd emails saying that this has to do with daylight and nighttime. It doesn't have anything to do with that. It has to do with specific hours of the day that our parks are closed. And so, even when it gets dark at four o'clock or five o'clock, that doesn't somehow change the park hours, which I think has been just a misleading thing that a few folks have unfortunately shared. But I'll leave it there for now, and we'll take testimony, and then I'll probably add a little bit more commentary on the back end.
Any other from the sponsors right now?
I'll talk later.
Okay.
I think Jonathan.
I don't have a ton to say right now. I think we've talked a lot about this one. But were we going to make an amendment on this one?
We are.
Yeah, the hours one, but we do it.
Now, go, you should go ahead and do it now.
It was circulated by Jeff.
That's the whereas.
Yeah. So, it did not change. It got buried. I was just going to read it. I don't know. Dot, that changed a lot more than the whereas. So, this one, the amendment is to modify the section, say, all city parks shall be closed from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, except Riverfront Park, which shall be closed from 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. And then, it would also add a whereas, the city, the Spokane City Council requests the Spokane Park Board update the park hours to reflect the hours listed in this ordinance. And, there's a word and.
And I will just add to that, that we did hear back from the Parks Director, who said if this is acceptable and we pass it, then he can work with the Park Board in July to move it forward.
So, is there a motion to substitute?
That's my motion to substitute that part.
Do you have a, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to substitute? All those, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to add, I think this is a good compromise, and grateful that we kind of got this figured out at the, at the last minute. But I think the hour change does make a lot of sense for this ordinance.
Go ahead.
Yeah, same. We'd sort of heard conflicting things, and we weren't sure. But today, it was confirmed that we, as the city council, can do this. And speaking on ours, I mean, I remember being a young kid and being at the parks, and especially into the summer, the summer months, the summer days, you know, there were times where we were at the park until, you know, 11:00 at night, playing games and stuff like that, because it was still light out enough to do that. And even once it got dark, then you could play games that, you know, were better in the dark. Shout out to the Friendship Park folks out there. But no, I think this makes a ton of sense. And even then, when we're talking about Captain Hendren and all the work that he's put in, he even specifically said the hours, the issues they're having are from the hours of 11:00 to 5:00. And so, opening this up a little bit for folks, which is stuff that we talked about quite a bit, I think, is going to be good for the parks.
And just clarifying, I said it was a motion to substitutes, a motion to amend. Is that right?
Motion to amend the park hours, everything I already said.
Okay. And the second, friendly. Okay. All right. All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, amendment's in place, and now we have several people from the public testifying. First is Rick Bochuk, then John Alder, and then Sunshine Wigan.
I'm going to assume you're talking about all the parks, but when it comes to Riverfront Park, it starts right here at post, and it goes all the way over to the convention center. And are you going to allow people to walk through the park that are going home from work, or just happen to be stuck on the other side over there, or do you have to make them walk on Monroe Street or there? And there is no sidewalk on Washington underneath the underpass. Are you taking those things into consideration? Or are you going to inconvenience people all the way? Or are you going to take that into consideration? If a police officer sees somebody walking, are they going to use their discretion and wonder why they're walking through there? Because I feel like, even though we have a time, place, manner restriction, that's what you're doing on the parks, but I think there should be some exceptions, or you should make some kind of a pathway that goes through the park, because this is a big park over here. And you are really putting a pressure on people that walk. There's a bar over there, Old Dority's. At two o'clock in the, in the, what if they had to go, are you going to make them walk through Washington, or are you going to make them go all the way around? This is something I think should be taken into consideration before you even judge this thing. I mean, I get you're trying to stop the problems. I get that. But there is other people that aren't the problem. And those are the ones you should be taking into consideration, too, and I don't think you are. You're not looking at how big this park is and how inconveniencing the way to get from one side of the river to the other is. And you should be looking at that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down. John Alder, and then Sunshine Wigan, and then Anwar Peace.
Hi, John Alder, Spokane, Washington. This seems aimed at the homeless people with no homes and find a park a comfortable place to be. Didn't we just pass a new law to add to the gluttony of laws? You have to punish those needing treatment, shelter, et cetera. You already tried sweeps, sit-in lie laws and parks misdemeanors, and wow, we still have homeless here. It may sound like a broken record, but food feeds the hungry, medicine cares the ill, and last but not least, shelter is a cure for unhoused. These are people you are punishing. Jail solves nothing. 24/7 wraparounds, treatment centers, shelters, food banks offer help. Please spend money on help and not punishment. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Sunshine, after Sunshine is Anwar Peace, and then Catherine Cork.
I do a lot of outreach in parks. Like, I feed in Mission Park every Saturday. They call me the food lady. And what I see personally is that when these rangers come in, they use their discretion, and a lot of the time, they'll bring these guys blankets and stuff. So, I mean, I'm hoping that if we were to pass this, that that discretion will still be there because they have made a really good effort in building relationships with these homeless people that they are encountering in these parks, as, from what I've seen in my encounters. And I just ask that that kind of discretion still be used. And there's also, like, where the kids play the basketball and stuff, and I just, I really like seeing the kids playing basketball rather than being out doing bad things. So, in the neighborhoods that I hang out in, like, up on 27th, there's a little park, and those kids up there are just wonderful and would save your life in a drop. So, I just ask that if we do put this law into order, that these, that it's somewhere written in there that they have the discretion to say, hey, if this person's not problematic, this person is, I can use this, you know, as a tool. I just ask that that stay there for them. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Anwar Peace, then Catherine Cork, then Zach McGuckin. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, Spokane resident, and the Chair of the City Spokane Human Rights Commission. About three weeks ago, the Commission's Executive Committee wrote a letter to the city council regarding this park ordinance, in which that letter from the Commission raises concerns based upon the lens of both human rights as well as legal constitutional issues with this ordinance, and requested the city council decline the adoption of this ordinance. Our letter can be found at our Commission's Facebook page, but I want to read a bit of it. As officers of the body with a mandate to advise and make recommendations to the city council regarding issues relating to human rights and unjust discrimination and the implementation of programs consistent with the needs of all residents of the city of Spokane, we write to address the proposed amendment to the section of the Spokane Municipal Code, which would reclassify the penalty for being in a city-owned park after close from a city civil infraction to a criminal misdemeanor. We fear this change in the law may impact people who are not committing other crimes. Furthermore, this change in the law would disproportionately impact low-income individuals, given that more affluent citizens don't typically walk through the park to get to or from their jobs during the hours which the parks are closed. Finally, and importantly, reclassifying the penalty for individuals in a public park after hours from civil to criminal is unnecessary because all the current law already provides law enforcement the authority to arrest individuals who are creating issues. I see a troubling pattern in this city as a commissioner, and we are not treating our homeless folks the way that they should deserve to be. The fact that this ordinance is more likely going to harm our homeless friends is really sad to me. We need to do a better job of addressing what the underlying issue of this ordinance is. Is it really to control crime? Because like the Commission's letter says, there is already laws on the books that say you can't shoot a gun in a park, which is one of Captain Henderson's issues. There's already laws on the books that say you can't vandalize city property. So, what are we actually doing here, other than giving this police department, who is already problematic, more authority to harm our homeless friends? Again, the Spokane Human Rights Commission Executive Committee urges you not to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Anwar. Catherine Cork, then Zach McGuckin, and Kadim Rockman, I believe.
My name is Catherine Cork, and I normally speak out on anything that infringes on the rights of persons experiencing homelessness. In this case, it seems pretty much a done deal, but I would like to propose some amendments. I think the sunset hours would be a good idea as per... idea, as proposed by Councilman Sapon, because it's been my experience in watching things for the last few years, that numbers don't magically come to the city council unless there's a consequence to them coming to the city council. So, if this law were sunsetted, you can be sure you would get the relevant numbers. That's one thing, I think. The other thing is, is that if it really is that big of a deal to the police and the Parks Department, why not make an emergency and actually get some data this year? Why wait till August to start? And then the third thing is, there does not seem to be much in the way of youth and young adult activities in the evenings. And I would like to see some kind of a task force developed concurrently with this to address that piece of it. It needs to go hand in hand, in my opinion. I'm a grandmother. I care about the kids that I have that are young adults right now, and my upcoming grandchildren that will use, make use of parks as they get a little bit older. So, I'd like to see these things addressed now, rather than later. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Zach McGuckin, then Kadim, and then Reese.
Hello, my name's Zachary McGuckin. I'm a member of PSL. I was already up here. But I want to talk about who this law is going to be impacting. We've already heard that it's going to be impacting unhoused folks. It's also going to be impacting women fleeing from domestic violence. It's also going to be impacting LGBTQ youth fleeing abusive households. And so, for you, this might just be a normal day, like, voting this law in. But for a lot of people in this city, it's going to be devastating. These people don't have places to go. We've talked about, there's no resources for these people. This law, I said it last meeting, but this law is racist, it's sexist, it's classist, it's homophobic for those reasons. When you look at who's getting harmed, it's going to be poor and oppressed people. And I'm sure it's going to pass. I'm hoping to be surprised, but I'm sure it's going to pass. And the burden of harming those people are on all of your shoulders. And I hope that when this law passes, it shows the people in the audience that the answers to our problems aren't going to be found in this room. It's going to be found from us organizing and us building power, because you all aren't listening to the people here speaking at the podium. I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Zach. Kadim Rockman, and then Reese Atwood by video, and then Will Huelings.
My name is Kadim Rockman. I'm a member of PSL. This bill, whether stated or not, is a direct attack on the unhoused community of Spokane, and displays the ongoing dehumanization that exists in the city towards unhoused people. They have to face constant dehumanization, insults, and just a perception that views them as less than. It criminalizes their existence in public spaces, and doesn't seek to make the park a safer or better place, but rather ones where human beings who are struggling the most can exist. The city of Spokane, I want to reiterate the point that I said in the public forum, the city of Spokane is on unceded and stolen land, and in no way should the park police or city council have any authority to tell human beings that it is illegal for them to seek shelter or simply exist in this land. This bill will not decrease crime, but will rather put unhoused people out of sight and out of mind, ignoring their needs, and pushing them further into that dehumanized category. This will also hurt, as Zach said, people escaping domestic abuse, queer kids escaping homophobic and abusive households, and because of Spokane's racist police force, will target specifically Black and Indigenous people. Since the city of Spokane is dead set on harming the unhoused in multiple instances, and sitting in their privileged positions, this council will most likely vote yes, but I urge you to vote no on this and actually show real support towards our unhoused community. I see the rest of my time.
Thanks for coming down. So, we're going to try Reese on video.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah. You, welcome to city council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Reese Atwood. I live in the city of Spokane. I work as a temporary seasonal employer of Riverfront Park, and I'm testifying in my personal capacity. I do not believe making it a misdemeanor to be in the park after hours will make my job any easier, or make parks any safer for the public. It is already a civil infraction to be in the parks after hours. Most of my work cleaning is due to the city sanctioned events, such as concerts and Hoop Fest. The worst vandalism that occurs in the park is in the public bathrooms, which are only open during park hours. And vandalism is already illegal. Drug use happens throughout the day, not just after hours, and it's already illegal. Like, most of the problems the parks is facing, and the Parks Board is facing, are already illegal and could be enforced, but aren't. It's, making it a misdemeanor to be in the park is just going to punish everybody for being in the park after hours when there doesn't need to be. And like people have said before, there's just not a lot for people, not a lot of places for people to go. And then for kids, where are they supposed to be? There's no after-hours events in Spokane, other than bars. There isn't even, like, bowling alleys or anything anymore. A misdemeanor offense is just going to disproportionately affect working people and people experiencing homelessness. People should be able to take refuge in city parks, because city parks should be for the people. I'd like to add that many of the people I wake up during my job, like, for having to clean things, are teenagers. They're, like, vulnerable children. Is it worth having a misdemeanor in order to maybe catch people doing drugs in the park at night, to give children misdemeanors? All right. I see my time. Thank you.
Thanks, Reese. Will Huelings, and after Will is Silas Erolde. You have to correct me on that pronunciation. And then Steve Corcoran.
Good evening again. My name is Will Huelings. I live downtown. I'm a proud U.S. Navy veteran. How about that? I hear all this socialism and stuff. Fucking garbage. But anyways, oh, excuse my language. Anyways, this, speaking of the parks, I'm definitely for it. And when I say for it, like, reasonable hours. Like, I don't see why anybody should be out 2:00, especially a kid, past 11:00. I mean, when I was growing up, I had hours that I had to be home. But I understand there's people that are homeless, street kids, and they'll use that excuse. But anyway, speaking of the parks, this weekend at Hoop Fest, you probably heard there's been a lot of stabbings. Well, I was sitting over there talking to Operation Engage drug enforcement agents. Their booth was set up right next to where a large group of kids that were hanging around. And then they started fighting, and it just blew up. And they were over by the water fountain, and there was people there. I was there, and these agents, I said, you better be, you got your guns ready? And, you know, they said, we're watching them. But that's, them are people that aren't even from here that see that. I mean, that's just in the daytime. But this is mainly focused on the nighttime. So, I, you know, like I said, I'm for it, because there's no reason for a large group of kids to be in the park doing drugs, and fighting, and, I mean, it's just out of hand. And in any other civilized country, they have laws. But unfortunately, in America, there's certain people that think they're above the laws, and they should be able to do whatever they want. So, that's my.
Thanks. And for the next person, I'm hearing some chattering out in there. Again, I think, I don't think you're trying to disturb people, but please, if you want to talk, go out and say. And that brings us to Silas, and you're going to have to introduce, so I'll understand how to pronounce your last name. Thank you for coming.
It's Silas Erolde. You got to roll that R.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. You have up to three minutes.
So, I understand that this ordinance is partially in response to an uptick in shootings in the parks last year. I think the core of the issue is a question of the value of human life versus the value of enforcing rules, because it seems to be the case that there is an investment in enforcing rules in the parks. However, there is not a matching investment in addressing the root causes that lead to things like shootings in the parks. If, and I know this isn't a meeting, we're not talking about budget right now, but if something like this were to be matched, like, proportionally at all to the policing budget for Spokane, perhaps we wouldn't have the circumstances that lead to the deaths of people and the harm caused last year. And predominantly, those victims were between, I think the youngest was 16, and the oldest was 40, but in between there, we had 19-year-olds, 20-year-olds. And so, someone mentioned as well, like, nighttime activities, creating spaces that are 21 and under, where kids like myself, growing up, who are not accepted for being a part of, or having the identities they have, creating spaces where those that are not safe at home can be safe together and have a community, we wouldn't need parks and, like, to gather, if that makes sense. So, I think I'm going to see the rest of my time.
Thanks for coming down. Okay, next, Steve Corcoran, and then Magra Flatman by phone, and Gretchen McDevitt. Welcome back.
Thank you. Having spent years, not only on the city council, but the park board, I've watched the city try to address the concerns of public safety, of the use of our public parks. Personally, I was really never that concerned about the presence of people. My concern has been the presence of conduct by those people, and dealing with the safety concerns, particularly of our youth. I watch council after council struggle with trying to understand the difference between illegal and criminal activity, where the line should be drawn, and where the rights of the public and its right to safety is in conflict with the rights of the individual. I see ordinances like this trying to give tools to those who are given the responsibility to protect us, to fulfill their responsibilities, and create a safe environment. I've heard tonight, people talk about the infringement of rights of various groups. But each of those people and each of those groups have suffered the consequences of illegal activity. And they need to be protected in terms of the conduct which is demeaning to our society. We talk about the various common ills in our society, and what license does that give in terms of holding them accountable and the issues of punishment? I'll always argue for humanity. I'll argue for a second and third chance. But at some time, public officials are accountable for that issue of public safety. And there may be excuses that they seek to find in making arguments. But the issue is holding people accountable, and then holding them accountable, or humanity that helps them have a better life. And I think ordinances like this are moving in the direction of primary public safety, which is your major responsibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Empower Magra. Go ahead. You there, Magra?
Hello? I'm, I here?
Yep, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Illegal activities are still illegal. Tickets can be given for violent crimes. Criminalizing the simple existence of being in the park after close is targeting Spokane's most vulnerable. The homeless who are looking for somewhere to sleep have nowhere else to go. Even if they can travel all the way to Trent Track Shelter, the most recent update has less than 2% availability, or six beds out of 350. There's no guarantee that by the time they make their way all the way over there, there will be anything available to them. Hope House is full and has been full. There are zero other locations in Spokane for homeless adult women to seek shelter, despite Spokane's latest point in time count showing hundreds of homeless people who exceed available shelter space. The only people who are being targeted by this ordinance are those who are in the parks without committing any crimes, because crimes, by definition, are already illegal. The homeless in Spokane who have no available shelter space are the overwhelming majority of this targeted group. On August 12, 2021, a Spokane businessman emailed the mayor and chief Midell upset about the amount of homeless downtown and the lack of laws when there is no shelter space available. He wrote, quote, "We are looking for other ways to enforce. We need to find other ways to enforce." Less than two weeks later, on August 27, Chief Midell wrote back with a plan to use public funds to, quote, "create a slightly narrower pathway, which is then, which then prevents sleeping subject to pedestrian interference," end quote, in Brown Street via Dux. This proposed misuse of public funds was the first of another way to enforce when sit-in lie is illegal. Since 36394 is the latest in other ways to enforce, because sit-in lie is illegal, when there's no low-barrier shelter space available, such as last night and tonight for homeless women in Spokane. Spokane's Equity Subcommittee advises against this ordinance. They released a letter May 22 stating, quote, "We do not recommend criminalizing as a first response." Councilmember Stratton, who is a co-sponsor, stated something to the effect of, "We just passed the laws. It's up to others how they interpret and choose to enforce." Spokane County Prosecutor Larry Haskell has continually justified his department's overzealous charges by stating, quote, "We charge consistent with the facts and the statute." The statute, in this case, gives Spokane police and prosecutors full reign to charge people who would not otherwise be criminally charged, because they are not doing anything illegal. Criminalizing existing in a public space, especially when targeted, homeless people have nowhere to go. There is no shelter space available in Spokane. This gives Haskell justification to continue, quote, "charging consistent with the statute." Thank you.
Thank you, Magra. Gretchen McDevitt, welcome. After Gretchen is KJ January, and then Justice Forall.
Yeah, Gretchen McDevitt, Spokane, Washington. I strongly support this ordinance. Unfortunately, we need an ordinance, because there are too many people that do not obey the laws. And yes, it punishes people that do obey the laws. People have said, you know, just arrest those that are using drugs or committing other illegal acts. But the problem is, that's harder to spot. It's easy to spot people in the parks. It's not necessarily easy to spot if they're doing something illegal. And since the parks are closed between 11:00 and 4:00, when a lot of illegal activity can occur, it doesn't always, but it can. So I do support this. The current system is not keeping our community as safe and as enjoyable as we want it to be. As an active member of the Comstock Neighborhood Council, I know there have been concerns, especially from people that live near Comstock Park. And they may not be, well, there was a shooting up there, but not after hours. But we may not have had the shootings, but we have vandalism, boisterous activity, thefts. And so, this is a good way to help deter that. We can do an exam, check things in a year and see if it's had a positive effect. It's a straightforward and more easily understood than the alternative ordinance, and that's why I support it. I do have some suggestions, and for all the people that are concerned, because I know there's a lot of concerns, then sit down with them and see what we can come up with to tweak it a little bit. One of my suggestions would be, as an incentive to encourage following the law, if someone gets cited, defer the sentence for a specific period of time. If they get no more park infractions, then it's removed from their record. Or if there are people that really need to be in the park after hours, somebody, maybe that does work at midnight, and then needs to walk straight across, give them a park pass that they can use to, for a particular park. I know there's concerns about racial and economic equity. I suggest a brief procedure checklist that is kept on each person for a while and see, to see what the effects are. If a person is stopped after hours, make sure that all are treated equally by going down this checklist. My husband is a pilot. He's been a pilot for 60 years, and every time he gets in an airplane, he goes through this written checklist to make sure he hasn't forgotten anything. This would include rationale for why the individual was cited, or why the individual wasn't cited. And then after six months or so, review the list and see if there's any economic or racial disparity. Again, please pass this ordinance, and let's see how it works. ordinance, and let's see how it works. It's simple, clear, and more easily enforceable, and a change in the law is needed. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. KJ January, and then Justice Forall, and then Rick Matters.
Hello.
Welcome.
Oh, hi. I'm KJ. I'm from Spokane. So I grew up in what is now called the Perry District, and this ordinance takes me back to a time when I was pulled over after leaving Grant Park, or more specifically, the Rainbow Park, as that section was often referred to. I was 18 years old, freshly graduated from LC, and about to go to college in Arizona on a basketball scholarship. Like many people in the area, we didn't have AC, so spending time outdoors at night was common practice since we were less active during the day. On this particular night, I met up with three friends at the Rainbow Park to play basketball. We played for hours, losing track of time. We all got into my car to leave, and as I turned the corner, leaving the cul-de-sac, blue and red lights flashed in my rear-view mirror, and my heart sank to the pit of my stomach. I was scared and confused. He approached my window and began his inquisition. What were you, what were all of you doing at the park at this hour? Where are the others you met up with? Are there any weapons in your possession or in your vehicle? Have you consumed any alcohol or drugs? Would you be willing to undergo a sobriety test? I was stammering, but I insisted that I was unarmed and that no substances were present in my body or in my car, and that we had been playing basketball, just the four of us. You could see the doubt in his face. He then informed me that the park was closed about an hour or so ago, making it very difficult to believe a group like ours was just playing basketball. He demanded my ID and registration, and my hands shook as I fumbled to provide them. When he noticed that, he again questioned my sobriety and intent to be in the park. My voice was trembling, but I reassured him that I was sober and confessed that this was my first time being pulled over as a driver. Upon glancing out my ID, recognition washed over his face. "January, is your sister Breon?" he exclaimed, to my relief. This was a conversation I had experienced many times before. We began talking about my sister and her aspirations for the WNBA. He let us go after that. We drove in silence, still shaken up from being interrogated and reprimanded for the crime that we were unaware of and had harmed no one in doing so. What if things had escalated? What if one wrong move or one misunderstood response had unleashed an unthinkable tragedy? What if he didn't know who my sister was? My car was filled with black faces and black features, and it seemed that was enough for the officer to doubt anything I had said until Breon was discussed. In recent years, we have all witnessed numerous news stories about simple encounters like mine that escalated negatively and spiraled into horror. Lives can be irreversibly altered and abruptly extinguished due to systemic biases and misunderstandings. If the officer had doubted me further, I might not be the person I am today, a black, queer, educated woman fighting for the rights of people who are like and not like me every day. My friend Rainiquel might not have had the opportunity to play D1 basketball at Idaho State and become a captain company commander for the US Army. Dominique might have not have been able to start his beautiful family, and Mitch wouldn't be serving in the Coast Guard exploring the world. This ordinance will not effectively combat crime or drug use. Instead, it will provide those biased police officers with an excuse to harass Black, Brown, community members, as well as the homeless individuals seeking a peaceful place to rest their heads at night. Thank you, and that's it.
Thanks for coming down. Justice Forall, then Rick Matters, and Alexis Tenasket.
Hello, my name is Justice Forall, Spokane city resident. I would like to say, you as a council has failed our homeless population. You as a council has failed our youth. You have not provided more opportunities for our youth to engage with the community. You have not provided anything for people to get out of homelessness. You have created more and more situations where you criminalize the people who are just trying to live their lives. We need more services, not less. We need to make our parks more open, not less open, as I've talked about before. We need to make sure we have more activities at night, not less. It is hot, and definitely, though, it is, there's disparities in those who have cool houses and those who do not. A cool spot at night is the parks. It is a shame that you are banning a public space like the parks. Their last bus ends at 11:30, and that means those people leaving at 11:30 crossing the parks will be targeted. But we know that's not only the people, the working-class people. We know it's our unhoused community and the teenagers. And you have yet to provide any kind of peer support, any kind of counseling, any kind of outreach to these teens. These teens are sexually abused. These teens are, have no really safe place to go. They are constantly just doing things that they shouldn't be doing because they don't have any better. And what do we do? We plan to arrest them. We plan to expand the jail that we shouldn't be building in the first place. That's what we're doing. We're planning to continue to criminalize our unhoused community, continue to criminalize the youth. For what? So y'all can make some money off a new jail? Not new jail, the expansion of a failed jail that's already not working. 75% of people currently in jail are pre-trial. That means they are not convicted of being guilty of anything. They are guilty of being poor. They're guilty of not having money to get themselves out. But what happens to them after that? They lose their jobs. But let's go ahead and arrest them. Let's just arrest everybody. Let's just ban all of Spokane if you don't have money. Because that's what we're planning on, right? That's what we do. I don't see anything else. I don't see any real solutions coming out of this council. I don't see any solutions for these young people. I don't see any spaces for these young people. Failed. You have failed the youth. You have failed our unhoused community.
Rick Matters, and after Rick is Alexis Tenasket, and Justice Howler, Justin Howler.
Hello, my name is Rick Matters, Pastor Rick Matters. I'm here mainly because I'm the, privileged to be the chair of the Criminal Justice Committee of the NAACP. And I do stand in opposition to the, to the ordinance that you're considering. And I'm asking that you vote it down now and go back to the drawing board and see if you find a way that avoids arresting people, that doesn't make it a crime. And, because that's, that's the hinge here, and I think you've heard a lot about that from other people as well. Because approving this ordinance moves us one step closer to being a community that incarcerates as a solution, imprison people as a solution to problems, but there's other ways to solve the problems. The, I apologize for not knowing more about how the park department explained the difficulty of enforcing the laws. So I'm ignorant on that. But I do know that the police already have the necessary tools for arresting people who commit violent acts or use or sell drugs. So, but this is mainly a homelessness issue, and it's a serious problem not only in Spokane, but other places, as you know. And it's a challenge. There's no easy solution to this. And it's caused by the ever-widening wealth gap that shrinks the middle class. How many people in Spokane, this is an important question to ask, how many people are in Spokane are one car payment away, a car repair payment away from eviction? And then they will become homeless. And the role of homelessness includes such trauma that you endure rape, other sexual abuse, you endure the trauma of hunger, health issues, some misuse of police force, and all of that leads to the traumatization of seeking self-medication, which spirals the issue. I know you're aware of this. But please note, who is already in the jails, and who would most suffer from this ordinance? Overwhelmingly, it's people of color and poor people. So please pay attention if you choose to, you know, I'm hoping you'll vote no and go back to the drawing board. If you choose to vote yes, please pay close attention that your votes, vote has racial and social economic consequences. Social and racial economic consequences in your vote. Not only is this ordinance not necessary to arrest people.
Your time's up, Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Alexis Tenasket, then Justin Howler, and then Andrea Gallardo.
Thank you. People don't just disappear. People get moved, moved into residential areas, into downtown, with zero other viable, realistic options. We are all paying excessively to move suffering human beings from place to place, and sometimes violently, they're moved. If you want the community to have more trust for police, this is an ineffective strategy for police-community relations. All the people who work tirelessly in our community to keep those of us who are deeply struggling alive should not have to fight against those who claim to represent all of us, and those who have decision-making power over our shared resources, which we all contribute hours of our lives to via tax dollars, and hours worked toward keeping our neighbors at the bare minimum alive. It is never a smart idea for the long term to work against those you claim to serve and represent, or to literally weaponize our own tax dollars against us. How dare you further criminalize the already limited access we have to nature, on native land? I am currently one of the people who don't have a working vehicle. I require time in nature. As a native person and as a human being who lives on the planet Earth, I require time in nature for my mental, spiritual, and physical health. We rely on nature. How can we forget that?
Thanks, Alexis. Justin. After Justin Howler, Andrea Gallardo, and then Natasha Hill. Welcome back.
I'm Justin Howler, and I have mixed feelings on this. I'm all for giving law enforcement the tools they need to do their job, but this ordinance is not racist. It's not homophobic. It's not transphobic. It's not any of the things that people have mentioned before. It gives law enforcement the tools they need to do what they need to do. If I'm sitting out there taking a time lapse with a tripod, I'm probably not going to commit some graffiti later on. So I don't think it's about time so much as it is about behavior. And I'm sick and tired of cops being vilified for doing their job. And if you think all cops are bad, please just leave, you know? Go to Chicago. Go to Minneapolis. Go to any place that is run by the people that are ruining our current city. It's just, it's deplorable that you don't stand behind law enforcement when you guys both get the same paycheck. You get the same paycheck from the same taxpayers. And I think it's really sad that you won't encourage them to be able to do their job and give them the tools they need, you know? And the audacity for a city council member to say, "Oh, I don't feel comfortable helping you." Trying to catch a murderer? That's, that's just sick. That's just despicable.
Mr. Howler.
To stay on point with the parks, and it circles back, because if you don't back law enforcement, you don't back law enforcement across the board. You have to back them. You have to back the blue. They risked their lives to be here and to help us, and to help us stay safe. Maybe we need programs that help the fatherless households, because there are a bunch of statistics saying the fatherless households commit more crime than fathered households, and maybe don't vilify fathers and allow them, have some pathways for mentorships with men in their lives who are strong figures that can help them. Bring back shop classes in schools. Bring back pathways for people not to do the things that they're doing. And, you know, I remember being 17. It sucked. My dad was out of town. My mom was going to dental school. I had no one. I was just out there doing my own thing. And you know what? My dad reeled me in when he got back home, because I had a dad in my life. I was lucky enough to have someone in my, in my life to say, "Hey, you're screwing up. Don't do this." And for somebody who doesn't have a father, law enforcement's it. Law enforcement's that slap on the wrist going, "Hey, bad." And maybe quelling the small things will stop the big things, you know? Nobody's out there stealing spray paint for the goodness.
Thanks. Thanks for coming down. Andrea Gallardo, and then Natasha Hill.
Hello, city council. Thank you for being here. My name is Andrea Rose Gallardo. I am a co-founder of MAC Movement. MAC Movement is, stands for Music Art and Creativity Movement. We're out there every day on Mondays doing free food at the side of free speech, because we believe, you know, free food is everyone's right, and so is free speech. So we're out there doing chalk art and encouraging people to come here and speak, because it's very much needed to hear from the people. And so I commend everybody that came up here and spoke, and I hope that you guys listen, because I think there has been a lot of good points. And also shout out to everyone that did chalk out out there. I wanted to mention one of the things that were written in chalk art. It says, "Police protect property, not people." And I really think there's something wrong with that. There's no honor in genocide. As a direct descendant of the Spokane tribe, I feel like it's my duty to tell you guys that you are on stolen land, and there is no honor in genocide, and to remind you that this land holds the blood and the dust of my ancestors. And we must respect the land that we're on and the people, and we must work together and learn from each other so that we can live together and stop this war on the poor in criminalizing and targeting the homeless and the poor. You know, this is a health matter, not, not a law. This shouldn't be anything to do with the law. We should be having people come out there that are health professions to help these people, because these are people. People we're talking about in our community. And I remember seeing the sign of the no camping, and as an Indigenous people, this is not our way. Camping is our way, and to have no camping, that's not our way. And we're always inviting, as an Indigenous person, we're always inviting and making sure that people have a home and a place to eat. And so what you guys are doing in this amendment is not our way as Spokane people. And Spokane means people of the sun, children of the sun. We are all children of the sun, and so we all matter. And all you guys have done so far is just scatter everybody everywhere with the sweeps, and we need to dismantle the designs of dehumanizing. We must dismantle the designs of dehumanizing. Thank you.
You can come down. Natasha Hill.
Hello, thank you. I'm Natasha Hill. I am a Spokane resident. I'm also an attorney here. I run my own practice in Spokane. I'm very much against this ordinance, and I definitely want to caution all of council here today in appreciating what this can do and how much it's going to cost taxpayer dollars. Couple of things that I've been hearing, and I just want to give this sentiment, that ignoring realities makes for really poor solutions. And I think you guys have gotten a really good snapshot of the concerns in the community that really have to do over conduct, not people. If we've got laws on the books that address this conduct, then why are we putting in place an additional law that really isn't addressing the conduct? You know, the example that KJ January came up here and shared, I don't know very many Black and Brown people, and I'm from Spokane, born and raised, Hilliard, who didn't have that same experience at some point with law enforcement. To the comment Alexis Tenasket made about building community and relationships with law enforcement, so they're serving all of the people in Spokane, not just the people with money, that's important. And you guys hold that burden. You guys have the ability to address those things. And supporting an ordinance like this is not representing your constituents. So if you're listening to the people in these communities, the majority of folks, that's not what they're saying they want. Instead of listening to the people who have the money and the power and the relationships with someone like Chief Midell to get the information, to make a plan, we know what's going on. You guys are, they're putting on the ballot in November, right, to increase taxes so we can pay more taxpayer money, to expand a failed jail, so we can- put more folks in it with laws like this, where we're not talking about conduct that's illegal, we're just talking about the placement of people where we don't want them and who that's visible to. This is ripe for civil rights violations, just as Rick Matters mentioned as a member of the NAACP Civil Criminal Justice Committee. Lawyers are, like me, we're happy to prosecute or to litigate those cases, because we know y'all got deep pockets, just like the builders do. When they screw up a project and go over budget, we're just going to pay them more money, right? Just like when law enforcement screws up, incidents happen at the jail, we just give them more money. You guys have the ability to change the reputation. Similarly, though, you get protection when laws are made, right? So, some of the concerns voiced here today, again, this is about, they're talking about people in the park. This ordinance is talking about people in the park, not conduct. So similarly, when we look at the people who get the protection, the laws passed, we're really talking about who they are, not really what they do. It's all about the relationships here. And then, even without legal support or policy arguments to support what they want, they can just send folks down here, the known quantities, who have the right relationships to influence this council. Don't let this be about politics. Let this be about people. Let this be about the people in your districts, the unhoused people that don't have anywhere to go. We're seeing data and statistics by people who spoke here today. So again, I just really caution you guys to really step up and not pass this ordinance.
Thanks for coming down. That's the end of public commentary on this.
Are you going to get called yet? I want to speak to this.
Hang on for just a moment.
I'm sure I signed up for it.
Hang on for a moment.
Christine, sign up for 99.
I'm right here, I want my three minutes.
Well, you didn't sign up for this one.
I think I tried to, if you guys clicked it wrong, because you're pulling your games.
No, we're not.
I'm right here, ready to speak my three minutes.
I'll see what the rest of council wants to do, but, all right, now you're out of order. But yes, Councilmember Cathcart.
Can we later speak?
Okay. Okay. All right, come back.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sure I attempted to sign up, as well as other things. My name, my legal name is Christine Schuler, my true name is Seven. I live in Spokane. And I noticed that a lot of people on the right side of the room, here, they made a lot of good points. This isn't about the hours that the park is open or closed, it's about the police officers being able to take them to jail? When police officers, they won't even investigate themselves when they rape their coworkers, okay? They have the discretion to not investigate themselves, but yet they're going to haul people to jail for being in the park after it's closed? That's what this is about, and it really shouldn't be that way. They should be escorted off the park. If they're in a park after it's closed, or any city property after it's closed, they should just be escorted. Check, check their ID. If they have a warrant out for their arrest, then, you know, address that. And also, what that guy Rick talked about, Riverfront Park, that's a unique park. It's very different from the city parks in this city. And one way to tell is the hours are different. He mentioned that the hours at Riverfront Park stay open until midnight. It's a very unique, different than all the other parks. So what that other guy in the green shirt is wearing that said, that you need to send this back to the drawing board and redo it, and separate Riverfront Park from all the other parks in the city. All the neighborhood parks are different than Riverfront Park. Riverfront Park has Centennial Trail, it has the bridges that people cross, not only drunks going home at 2:00 a.m., but city workers coming to work at 5:00 a.m. So there's lots of reasons to separate Riverfront Park, as far as this ordinance, than all the other parks. And so you really should just send this back to the drawing board. If people are in a park after it's closed, which I support, a park can close, a public park can close, just like any other public facility. This thing closes, schools close, there's lots of things that city-owned that close at a certain hour. So there's nothing wrong with that. If people are in a city park after hours, just escort them from the park, check their ID to see if they're a criminal with a warrant, and arrest them. If they're doing any illegal activities, there's already laws about that, whether it's in a public space or a private space. So I urge you to send this vote no, send this back to the drawing board, make a separate set of issue for Riverfront Park, and let people, you know, like you said, people need to have a place to be, and it is a different park, so it does qualify for different rules than the other park.
Thanks for coming down. All right, that brings us to the end of public comment. Council commentary, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. To start, thanks to everybody who came down and testified. I know there's a lot of differences of opinion, but appreciate hearing the input. And I really want to thank Councilmember Stratton, she has put in a ton of time on this ordinance, working with Captain Hendren and Mary Meramatsu, and negotiating with other council members, and just helping to try and get this thing formulated. So thank you very much for all the time and effort that you've put in. We've heard a lot about this isn't about people, and I just, I want to vehemently disagree. This is absolutely about people, it's about protecting people. I'll speak for my district specifically. We have a lot of very vulnerable individuals who reside throughout my district. Many of them live near our parks, and they deserve to be protected, just as the rest of our community, regardless of their wealth status. And I think that this is something that's important to them, to have confidence, to know that they are living in a safe neighborhood, a safe community. That's their right. It doesn't matter that they're vulnerable citizens, it doesn't matter that they might be lower income, the color of their skin, they have a right to live in a safe community, and we have to do everything we can proactively to ensure that. That is our first and foremost paramount duty as a city, as a municipality, is the public safety of our constituents. And so this is about the public safety of my constituents, the public safety throughout Northeast Spokane. There's a couple, just a couple of things I know were mentioned that just aren't quite accurate, and I want to correct. One, obviously, I talked about the hours earlier, this isn't about the darkness or the light, it is specifically about the hours of the day. And another is that our officers can already enforce, and they can. We have heard directly from them, they do not have the ability to enforce under the current code. They do not. And so that is why this change is necessary. Short of some drastic change to state law that would give them that ability, this is the only change, this is the change that would be necessary.
Please order. Councilmember Stratton?
I haven't finished yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was waiting for the interruption to stop.
Oh, okay.
And so that's one. And there was another that this is...
Yeah. Folks, people up here listened, and respectfully, hopefully, and so please give them the same courtesy.
Another was mentioned, and I don't know if they were suggesting that this is how this would be enforced, but I just want to clarify, Larry Haskell doesn't play any role in enforcing municipal ordinances that is outside of his purview. So this wouldn't go before Larry Haskell or any of his deputy prosecutors. I'll just finish by, again, just thanking, you know, the folks who have provided the input. We are going to continue to get data on this, and so if this goes into effect in August, I would expect to get the first report at our September Public Safety meeting, and we'll be able to review that data. And if there is some unexpected, bizarre, or really bad numbers, then we're going to discuss it, and we're going to talk about what we need to do to fix it. But in the meantime, this is a request of our Parks Board, this is a request of our Police Department, and it does make sense, because they do not, at this current point in time, have the ability to enforce without this change. And so I'm happy to give them this tool.
Councilmember Stratton?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming down tonight, but I do want to make some clarifications. In addition to what we've heard tonight, I want people to know that, right now, I just checked my file, my electronic file, and I have 160 emails that I've read from citizens inside and outside of Spokane that represent both sides of the issue. So we are listening to other people. I want you to know that between, well, I think all of council members, I know Zach and I, we attend every neighborhood council meeting in our district. Zach has attended them, I've attended them, and we've talked at least at two or three neighborhood council meetings about this ordinance, where we were at, sharing the information, getting feedback. So it's important that I share that with you, because I want people to understand that we are listening, and there are voices out there that aren't represented here tonight that have a different opinion. The other thing I want to say is that what this started as were the park rules, we were dealing with the park rules. In 2017, I believe, 2017 or 2018, there was a no trespassing in the parks that apparently got left out when some other changes were made. When the parks came to us and the police came to us, it was, can we establish the no trespassing again in the parks? And I want to share some numbers with you. In the last six months, in damages, property damages in our parks, in a six-month timeframe, Council President, can you have Mr. Justice?
I didn't say, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Please, order.
If you wouldn't do that, I would appreciate that. The damages to the parks, Mission Park, $54,000. The Old Witter Bath House, if you haven't seen it, it's beautiful, $14,000. Keigho Park, $26,000. AM Cannon, $6,000. Corbin, $4,000. Hill and Dale, $7,820. And Clark Park, $7,000. This includes graffiti, playground damage, fences, stolen club cars, electrical damage, and gutted restrooms. Recently, in the last several months, there have been three shootings in Dwight Merkel over in Northwest Spokane, those three different shootings. There have been three shootings in Mission Park, there have been two shootings in Audubon Park, there have been two shootings in Dutch Jake Park, there have been two shootings in Comstock Park, and two shootings in Cliff Park. When we met with the Park Department, the director, and the police, the problem that we defined was that there is, it is against the law, but here's the deal, the current sanction for violation of park hours right now is a non-traffic civil infraction. And what that means, stop it now.
I'm sorry. I'm watching you speak, so I'm not seeing anything.
And what that means is, state law does not permit officers to compel a detention for non-traffic civil infractions. Additionally, issuance of an infraction does not remove persons who are unwilling to move on their own from the parks. Increasing the sanction to a misdemeanor offense allows officers to investigate and, if necessary, compel detentions for this violation in compliance with current state law. It also allows for custodial arrest, and they can check background, they can check identifications. The stories we heard of police officers getting calls from neighbors living across from parks because there was, you know, a gang of people in the park being loud, two people in the park fighting, those police officers, they can go in, they can talk to them, but if those people aren't willing to share information, there is nothing that the police officers can do. So this provides them the tool to walk in, okay, now they've trespassed, so now I can check IDs, now I can check to see if they have weapons. I also want to say, we were very careful in putting into this ordinance the discretion, that yes, it does give discretion. If you're in the park, or walking through the park, or riding a bike through the park, or walking your dog through the park, and an officer comes up to you, if a neighbor's called the police on you because you're in the park, and if he approaches you, chances are, you're not going to get into any trouble. But if you have a gun on you, if you're with a gang of people fighting with alcohol, drugs, yes, that's going to be a problem for you. We also are very aware of the Human Rights Commission and the Equity Commission, and the stance that they've taken, which is why we've put in the ordinance that we want the Parks Department and the police to collect the data. We need to really look at this. This is serious, and we care about those equity issues, and we want to know what's happening. So, I hate to say this, but if I lived across the street from Franklin Park right now, I would put my house for sale and I would leave. And it's the same for some of these other parks, because whether you want to believe it or not, it is out of control. And if we can give our officers one more tool, and maybe if a call comes in and an officer can approach that person, maybe that those officers can stop that shooting before it happens. If a neighbor calls in and is very worried about kids in the park...
Please have order. Please don't, please don't make noise to interfere with people talking.
We've worked hard and long on this, and we've had a lot of conversations, and we've listened to a lot of people. This is not something that we were all excited to do, but it's something, when I go to my district in West Central, and I have people that are so frustrated with the crime in West Central, and they don't feel like people are responding, and they don't feel like people care, we have got to give them the tools. And we'll look at the numbers, but we've got to do something. Somebody needs to stand up and at least have something available for people that have to deal with this every day, living across the street from a park. Don't do it.
I didn't do anything. Okay, just, I'm just saying, please, I'm not, I'm saying, please just be quiet. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not a target activist.
Yeah, please. I'm saying, anyone who's making noise, it doesn't matter who they are, I'm asking to...
But was I?
To your point, yep.
This is the noise I'm talking about, it's this conversation. All right. Other council commentary?
Yeah, I, again, just want to thank Councilwoman Stratton, Councilmember Cathcart, really, everybody, again, on this board. There was a lot of good discussion on this issue, and I think that making it from 11 to 5 made a lot of sense. I think there's a lot of sense that is made in this ordinance. And we do go to our neighborhood councils, we do discuss with the neighborhoods, and in the end, we are, you know, representative of those neighborhoods. And, again, the overwhelming response we received there was, we appreciate what you're doing. The parks, we don't feel safe, and we want them to be safe, and that's one of the things government exists to do, which is to protect the people. And so I'm happy to support this today. Like I said, I wish we didn't need to do it, I wish there wasn't crime in the parks, but there is crime in the parks. And as such, and as a park board liaison, the City Council Park Board Liaison, I have been intimately involved in this conversation for some time, and this is, again, not a decision that we take lightly. We very much understand that there are going to be ramifications from this, but, again, the intent is not, the intent is to discourage criminal activity after hours in the parks. And I think that this ordinance gives us the opportunity to do that, and if it doesn't, we'll see in the data. We'll see as it's provided to the City Council, and we'll continue to allow the data to drive our decisions, to make sure that we're making good decisions for the community. And I appreciate, again, even the amendment that Councilwoman Stratton brought up to say, you know, hey, we want to see this in a year, you know, we want to see what the data looks like in a year, but it actually became more frequent than that, of we want to see this regularly, we want to see how it's affecting the community. And, again, I think this has been a very thoughtful approach to a real problem in our community. We have had, again, last year, there was 48 shootings in the parks, which was a huge spike. That's, again, one of the reasons why we're having this conversation, is because the Park Board was very worried about the parks after dark, and we're at 15 already this year, and I think that we're going to end up in the high 30s again, you know, maybe the low 40s. And so something needs to be done. If this is not the thing that is the right thing to do, we'll know it based on the data, and we'll make a correction. But currently, I think this is the right thing to do, and I'm happy to support. Again, thank you, Councilwoman Stratton, for all of your efforts. Thank you, Captain Hendren.
Councilmembers of whom?
Yeah, I'm going to be against this ordinance as it is written. There's a lot, I hear a lot of the need in our community, and a lot of the concerns. A lot of people are afraid, and that's the reality. We have seen a spike in the last year, and that's also a reality. I don't think the way that this ordinance is written and what it will do will accomplish those things, and I don't think, I think it creates a lot of liability for the city and a lot of potential problems for the city. As for the tools, just to address those about the police not having the tools, they do currently have civil infractions, and we've seen that they haven't used that tool over the last, since 20, I think it was 2019, they haven't written one ticket. So they're not using the tools that... So, they're not using the tools that they have now. As for Terry stops, or being able to talk and ask more questions, that was one of the first issues that I had to deal with when I was here on council, because there was a gun pulled on my neighbor in the alleyway. And the police did not follow up with that person after my neighbor called the police and said, there's a person with a gun that pulled it on me, on the alleyway. And later, we found out that, yes, indeed, they do have probable cause to go talk to that person who has the gun, that, when they claim that they had a gun pulled on them, they can go talk to them. So if someone were to call and said, I think that they have guns in the, in the park, I saw them have guns in the park, that would be enough of a reason to go do that and talk to them about that. So I don't know why, all of a sudden, we need to create another misdemeanor to achieve that same goal. Seems like we're mixing up different things here, and a lot of people might get caught up in between. I've also been disheartened that we couldn't compromise and come to a compromise as a council on this. I think we could have gotten to a point that was 7-0, and it's, it's disheartening when we don't get there and think about what a compromise is. I've also been very frustrated about this process. I think we, as a council, have been presented a lot of incomplete, delayed information or lack of information, both from City Legal and SPD, not from the employees themselves, individual employees who are working hard on that, but a incomplete process nevertheless. I'm a, I'm a council member, and I did a data request to SPD to ask them about the violations of vandalism and shootings over the last 10 years, five years before and five years after, and it took over 10 days to get that information, and I got it late last night. And we know that downtown property owners in Spokane can email the chief and get new data metrics created in the data. And as a council member, I'm struggling to get that information as I'm making a choice. Not even then, it comes as a data set, and I have to go through it and parse out the information myself. So it's pretty frustrating, but I did that today. And when we look at the bigger picture, going all the way back to 2017, we see shootings in 2021, we had 25 shootings, and in 2017, we had 30 shootings. So it actually went down after the change from a gross misdemeanor to a civil infraction. And then it did spike in 2022. It went up to 48. So that, that is a problem. But is it the infraction itself that is the problem, or is there a different thing that's happening in our community that's causing this problem? And I don't think it is the misdemeanor itself, and so I can't support it that way. I'm also against this policy because I just think it's, it's bad policy, and that it's going to do, cause more harm, harm than good. I'm hoping I'm wrong. I'm hoping that things go great, and that it fixes a lot of our problems, but I, I'm fearful of that, and a lot of people in our community are fearful of that. So that's why I added an amendment to have a sunset clause that would end in a year, that after a year, we would automatically end this, but if not, if it was going well, we could continue it. I also think it's bad policy because it doesn't address the root causes. Like we talked about, police already have ample authority to address public safety in our community, and this isn't addressing those, those root causes. Councilmember Stratton, I don't dispute any of the numbers of the last six months that you said. I think that's only a snapshot, and when we look at the greater picture, we don't see a big trend. I think this is bad policy because it could create a false expectation of service in our community. We could have community members calling the police and reporting more things in our parks, and they won't have the time, resources, or ability to go follow up on that, and it creates a frustration with community members and a distrust of, of the law. If the law's not being upheld, and there's no one enforcing it, then it teaches you that you can keep breaking the law because nothing's going to happen to you. On the flip side, if it is, there's a lot of, so that's, that's the distrust of not knowing what's going to happen, right? People aren't going to do it, but there's also the, if it is enforced, there could be a lot of discrepancies in enforcement, because this leads a lot of discretion. And with discretion comes implicit bias and other biases. I don't know what it looks like to look suspicious in the park. Is someone going for a run in the evening, wearing a black hoodie suspicious? I don't know. Because maybe they're just out for a run, maybe they're, maybe they're running away from something. Are drug dealers just going to start walking their dogs now and meet up with people to deal drugs because they're walking their dog, because we said that's okay? I don't know. So I think this creates a lot of potential of the law to be unevenly applied in our city, and I don't think laws should be unevenly applied. It should apply to everyone, and we're already saying that this won't apply to everyone. I think this could potentially open us up to lawsuits. Even the ACLU is emailing us to say that this is a bad idea. So I think we'll be monitored, and it's good that we'll have that monitoring system, because there's organizations, there's lawyers that are already watching and ready to litigate if this is not upheld evenly. The last thing, I think, the big fear, I'm a teacher, I think that this could have a lot of negative consequences on my students. They've, they've even told me at school, out of the blue, didn't even talk about this, they just came up to me and said, this is a bad idea. Shocking, because high schoolers don't usually watch the news, so I was kind of impressed. But I'm worried that youth or people in their early 20s are going to get criminally injustice involved, and that's going to put a bigger strain on our resources and our system, and that also leads to people ending up homeless and, and on the streets. They have criminal records that haunt them. We know that the jail's at capacity. If you're arrested here, you're not going to get booked into jail, you're going to just get cited and released, or maybe you'll get booked downtown and then released a couple hours later. Then they're going to have a warrant, they're going to have the court date, they might have to miss work if they're missing work and they don't have transportation. We had a whole presentation here about how that leads to different entries into homelessness. And I, I'm fearful that we're creating unnecessarily harsh punishment on something that is just simply being in the park after hours, and when that could be dealt with in a, in a less harsh way. So, for all those reasons, I oppose this ordinance, and yeah.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you, thank you, Councilmembers of whom. And I, I too appreciate my council members, my colleagues, who brought this. There is an issue, there's a challenge. We want everybody to be safe. Like, who doesn't want everybody to be safe? Be it in the park or anywhere else in the city, whether you're walking, midnight, daytime, doesn't matter. There are some tools that exist now that officers have, but like I shared today, I had spoke with someone who worked in the gang community, and said, there is an increase in gang activity. Because we talked about, well, what about, there's a number of people that would be identifying. So if there's that type of activity that's increasing, which hasn't been shared with us as council, but if it's going on and the police would bring that to our attention, then I'd like to kind of hear about that, because is that an underlying issue? Is, is that's what's going on in West Central and some of our other parks, that these shootings are occurring? Again, I know Officer Hendren talked about groups of people, groups of people, that it was consistent, it was a group of people here, and a group of people there in this park, young, 16 to 40. But again, what are we trying to police? So are we just trying to address just illegal, is it heavy drug use? Is it alcoholism? Is it vandalism? Is it rowdy teenagers, like one of my council members says, by her house, and the police don't come? So my concern is, we get past this, neighbors call, police can't show up because they don't have capacity to show up, and then citizens are frustrated again. They don't show up, we call them. There continues to be that. They're not serving us well. Well, we've laid one more thing on top of them. Again, we talked about the data, that kind of threw me today, because data can be interpreted, it's all correct, but how you interpret it, how you filter it out, how you present it, can really impact how you think about, how severe is it? So with that inconsistency, it made me concerned again, well, if we're getting information from the same sources, and the information is different, then why is that? We have to ask ourselves that. How come we haven't come to consensus on really, how big of a problem is this going forward? I will not be supporting this, and we are right, we did get a letter from the Spokane Human Rights Commission, we got a letter from the Equity Subcommittee, because people of color feel very uncomfortable with this ordinance. I'll just say it, it hasn't been mentioned, but race is playing a factor in this. We just don't feel safe that it would be implemented equally across the board. So people of color, low income communities, those are the ones we have heard from, people who are homeless, right or wrong, look at the data of who's in the jails right now, that cannot be ignored. It just can't, based on our demographics. So there are some concerns there. I want our parks to be safe, and if we had talked about a sunset clause, I could be in support of this, but without a sunset clause that really holds us accountable to deliver the kind of information that we need, I could not support it at this time either.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Thanks. I'm going to say some things that are probably a little difficult to hear, and I will tell you that this process has been painful. It's driven a wedge between council members, and I agree with the opposition, that the folks that say they are not going to support this, because there are a lot of problems with this. We had an opportunity, hold on. We had an opportunity for a compromise that would have had a sunset clause, and that could not be agreed upon, that's very disappointing. We could have had a, I believe, a 7-0 vote on this with the sunset. That, that disappointed me. The other thing that is very disappointing is not one person from the park board is here tonight, or called in to testify. So, in absentee, where are they, what are they really thinking? We just have a word-of-mouth hearsay. Nor was the Parks Director here. I, I feel as if a lot of the things that we've done here tonight have been derisive. I want the parks to be safer. I want people to feel that they can live across the street from the park, and as Councilmember Stratton says, not have to move because they don't know what's going to go on at night. I think that there are issues that haven't been dealt with, and I want to address the one issue that came up repeatedly, and that was data. And we're not getting it in a timely manner, we're not getting it accurately, and two sources will have different data. I'm going to, if this passes, I am going to ask, September 1, what are the numbers? And ask for a deadline, we want those in a week, we want accurate data. And I think as council, we need to insist that we're getting information. As Councilmember Wilkerson said, we're not, we're not getting the information that we need. Nobody's talked to us about a gang issue. So, we're being ignored by the very people that we could help, and that is very disappointing to me. I want to thank Councilmembers of whom for trying to, to come up with a compromise that we could all agree on, and I am sorry that that did not happen. That was very disappointing. And I am conflicted with this. I want to make sure our parks are safer. There are a lot of things about this I just do not like. That said, I, I am going to support it, but I'm going to do it under protest. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything else before I give my last words? All right. I'm not supporting this as it's written. I do just want to recognize, even sitting here, trying to give people a chance to express themselves, and there's just a lot of pain in the room, and it depends a lot on what you're focusing on, and there is, and we have not come anywhere close to solving that tonight, despite a lot of effort, a lot of work. I think all the pain that people have talked about, of the, the fear of what might be going on next door to them, and the damage that they might have had on property, the fear of other people, the fear of how it will be enforced, and what will happen to people who are vulnerable and homeless, you know, there's enough pain and suffering going around, and if we focus on that, that's, you know, that's what we see. And unfortunately, instead of coming together and figuring out some solutions, that we really have a consensus that would work, we haven't, so we're divided. Everybody is feeling some pain, either for themselves or people that they care about. So it's just a good example that lawmaking oftentimes just doesn't really solve the human conditions that we look to. I think for me, the reason that I have been skeptical of this proposal for so long is that there are really two, to me, kinds of laws. One kind of law is to regulate behavior where people are actually hurting and harming people's bodies and emotions and lives, or their property. That's usually what we put in the criminal law context, and we try to deal with that. Then there are other laws that have to do with trying to make society work more efficiently, you know, parking meters, speeding, hours of whether or not you can go in a park or not, if you're not doing anything that's harming people or property. And those are two very different things, both the stigma and just the consciousness. I don't think many people who have been speaking tonight worry too much if they're a few miles over the speed limit when they're coming down. They're arterial, but if you tell them, you are now committing a crime because you stepped off the bus onto the sidewalk at Manitow after 11 o'clock coming home from work, they feel bad about it. That's not a good, they're not connected with their community, they're divided. And I think that is the difference between rules that keep society moving orderly and rules that are meant to protect people or hold people accountable when they cause actual intentional harm. The challenge with the way this law is written is it's very broad, and it sweeps a lot of people into making them criminals, whether they're on an early morning run, or walking their dog, or going home from one neighbor to the other, and the shortest way is just across a park instead of going all the way around, or as some people mentioned, leaving a restaurant late at night and getting to their car. It, there's just, it sweeps up too much conduct that might not be orderly, might not be efficient, but it's not harming anyone, and that's the challenge I've had from the beginning. I've wanted to narrow it, and I've proposed numerous ways to do that, and the people supporting it, mostly the Police Department and the City Legal Department, have really just said, no, they want it exactly this broad, and that they will use discretion. And the challenge with discretion under the law is then all sorts of implicit biases can come in and make other mischief. Again, not intentional, but all sorts of problems. In particular, most of our parks are open space places, and under our constitution, they're just like streets and sidewalks, and you can't really kick people out of those unless you have a really good reason. And there have been attempts in our history to do that, to have curfews at night, and say, no, if you're out on the sidewalk, if you're out driving past a certain hour, that's a crime, and we're going to arrest you. And sure, we'll use some discretion, but we'll do that. And the courts have pushed back hard on that and said, no, that's not traditional open spaces, you've got a fundamental right to be there, you've got a First Amendment right to freely associate, to do free expression, and you can do time, place, and manner restrictions, as Mr. Bowcock noted, and under federal law, that's an intermediate scrutiny, and governments can get away with it. But under Washington's Constitution, time, place, and manner are subject to strict scrutiny. And there's a case called Collier versus the City of Tacoma that really outlines this, and says, if you're going to do time, place, manner restrictions, it has to be for really important government interest, and it has to be narrowly tailored, that you're only restricting the absolute minimum of conduct you need in order to uphold those rights for people to gather in public spaces, as long as they're not causing a problem or causing harm, or threatening harm to people. And so I am greatly fearful that this law as written will make us very vulnerable to legal challenge, will cost us a lot of money, and it will undercut faith in government. So both for the people who feel vulnerable and feel oppressed by a law, that when they're not doing anything wrong, other than they're not in the place that we say they should be, but not causing any damage, and they're not across a fence, or they're not in someone's yard, it's not, it's just public space. And then we're also going to undermine faith in government for the people who are fearful and think that if we pass this law, their lives will be safer and better, and if it turns out it's not. We have an extra complication, Boise v. Martin, that says we can't criminalize people sleeping in public spaces if there's not enough beds, and I don't think, based on the point and time count... time count, we have enough beds. So, there's a lot of problems to it. And then, it also, it doesn't really solve anything. So, there are people in our community who are willing to damage our important public infrastructure. There are people in our community willing to harm people, to threaten people, and to do that. This law doesn't address them. It simply moves them from one location to another. And so, I just don't think it's going to work. I know that generation after generation, about every 20 or 30 years, people bring out something that was tried before and didn't work, and it feels like that is what's happening. Well-intended. Everybody has pretty much the same goal, but I don't think it's legal, and I don't think it's going to work. And we worked really hard, all of us, to come to an agreement that would be more workable, and we, we didn't get there. And so, for that, I'm very sorry. And in the future, council will continue to wrestle with this. Hopefully, we will get more data. The one thing I'll say for the data that we finally got is, most of the crime in parks appears to take place during, when parks are open. So, if that is the challenge, I don't know that this is going to address it, yet there is plenty of fear and concern out there, and I just, I am hopeful that with data going forward, even though I don't like this particular law, we'll be able, it won't be me, but some future council will come back and do something that's data-informed and helpful. And with that, prepare to vote. And before I display, I'm going to ask councilmember Keneer, what's your vote?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The ayes. Oh, I did the wrong one, sorry. Please clear, a vote again. Prepare to vote. Okay. It passes four to three. All right. That brings us to first reading.
Ordinance C.36391 relating to the regulation of short-term rentals, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17(c)(316)(010)(020)(030)(040)(050)(060)(070) and setting an effective date deferred from June 12, 2023 Agenda. Ordinance C.36392 relating to fees on short-term rentals and short-term rental platforms, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 8.02.034, 8.02.066, and 08.08.010, adopting a new section 08.02.090 to Chapter 08.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date deferred from June 12, 2023 Agenda. Ordinance C.34, excuse me, Ordinance C.36400 relating to parking municipal codes and many Spokane Municipal Code Sections 8.02.083, 16(a)(04)(100), 16(a)(05)(060), 16(a)(05)(220), 16(a)(05)(220)(310)(460), 16(a)(07)(040), 16(a)(07)(080) and adding new section 16(a)(05)(155) to Chapter 16(a)(05) of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C.36401 relating to the sales and use tax for housing and housing-related supportive services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 8.07(c)(030) and 8.07(c)(050). Ordinance C.36402 relating to the establishment of a process to consider and act upon community members' concerns regarding city-owned property, adopting a new chapter 18.10 to Title 18 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C.36403 establishing the model of the city of Spokane and adopting a new section SMC 1.03.030. Ordinance C.36404 adopting policy standards for broadband infrastructure expansion. Ordinance C.36405 concerning parking regulations for housing, accepting minimum parking space requirements for certain residential developments, adopting a new chapter 17(c)(405) of the Spokane Municipal Code, interim parking regulations for housing, setting a public hearing and establishing a work program. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
All right. Well, we have some people who've signed up to testify, if they're still here. First is John Alder. I don't see John. Next is Dennis Flynn by phone. He's there. Dennis, are you there?
Can I hear you?
I can barely hear you, Dennis.
Sorry, I'll try to. Charles, silence is the difference in the subject of council meeting. Regarding ordinance.
Dennis, can you, can you log out and call back in? We're having a hard time.
I will.
Okay, thanks. Let's go to Anwar Peace while he's calling back in. And after Anwar, it'll probably be Dennis again, but then Christine Schuler. Welcome back.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and the chair of the City Spokane Human Rights Commission. I'm here speaking on C.36403. Back in March, council president gave a wonderful presentation to the Human Rights Commission about changing the model of our city, and since then, I've really, I've really been thinking about that model and how, how it's, it's kind of a reminder to us all that we all belong. We've had a lot of debate today about belonging and, and vulnerable folks that are in our community. And having this model change really emphasizes that we all do belong here in Spokane, and that's what makes us such a great city, is that we all belong here. And it's also a reminder of the dark history of Spokane, where some of us have not felt like we've belonged. In fact, you know, we, we know some of the dark paths of the MLK bombing attempt that was made, as well as there was a bombing attempt at City Hall by some, some Nazis here in town years ago. But this aspect of racism and white supremacy is continuing in our area. Just this weekend, we had an incident that took place at Pride and Perry where white nationalists showed up trying to intimidate that crowd. And it's kind of interesting, today I got a phone call from a reporter, and I thought they were actually going to be asking me about that situation at Pride and Perry, but they were actually calling me about a different hate crime that took place in Spokane. Some of us here in Spokane don't feel like we belong, and having this model allows those that don't think that we belong, it puts them on record to let them know that we're here, we're staying here, and we're proud of being here, and we contribute to this community the same way everyone does. And the fact that we are able to now enunciate this, that we all belong, I'm really encouraged by, by this model change, and I support that. Thank you.
Thanks. Dennis, okay, Dennis.
Hi, can you hear me better this time?
Yeah, that works. Yeah, I've got up to three minutes. Dennis, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles, calling about ordinance 36402. I feel this is so poorly written, I suggest council would be best served by sending this back for a serious edit, rewrite, resubmission. Municipal code should be clear, concise, and stand the test of time. The current wording in this ordinance does not clearly describe the process proposed, and it includes multiple redundancies that make it not concise. Examples of area of concern are 1810, 010, scope and purpose, change can cause to may be perceived to cause, also eliminate and also foster continuing disrespect of historically marginalized members of the community because almost no one believes this is really happening. Section 1810020, definition subsection A, community member, a community member should only include residents of the city of Spokane as the only people within the scope of this ordinance. Section B, concern, the word mash appears subjective and inappropriate for municipal code. G, request, this needs to be a formalized form, and the submission process must be formalized as well. And section I, SHRC, you can remove everything after the semicolon is redundant and unnecessary. And section 1810030, process, the current wording is an obtuse word salad that makes very poor utilization of the words that were just defined in section 1810020. For example, subsection A should be changed to, a community member shall submit a request to, for the SHRC to review the concern, and subsection B should be changed to, the SHRC shall task the work group as it's designated to process the request. And subsection C to, the work group shall determine if the request is submitted by a valid community member and includes valid concern. I recommend you reject this as written. For ordinance 36405, establishing a zero off-street parking requirement for all areas within a half mile of our expensive public transit, transit system is extreme and inappropriate. You realize this would be six blocks on either side of a transit line, right? I think this ordinance should be scuttled because off-street parking is a necessary and essential requirement for residential neighborhoods. Just think of how more on-street parking will negatively impact community street gatherings, visibility to passing traffic of plain children, not to mention street cleaning and snow plowing. If not scrapped, please change this to be 250 feet, which would be one block, or at most 500 feet. Ordinance 36391, I'm commenting on subsection C2C specifically against excluding common areas when determining maximum occupancy. Having used short-term rentals for extended family combined vacations, lots and beds and common areas are definitely something we specifically find valuable and look for when we know we'll be needing sleeping spaces.
Dennis, we're at the end of your, you're at the end of your three minutes.
Thank you.
But thanks for your commentary.
Council president, if, if he can hear, if he wants to submit those in writing, would love to take a closer look.
Yeah, Dennis, feel free to email us with anything you didn't get to. Christine.
Thank you.
And after Christine Schuler, Will Huelings, and then Maigra Flatman.
Hi, my legal, my, my legal name is Christine Schuler. My true name is Seven. I'm from Spokane, and so, I wanted to talk to all of these, but it's just three minutes for the law, so I'm going to focus on the one that's most important. C.36402, it says to establish a process to consider and act upon community members' concerns regarding city-owned property. And what it's talking about is, you know, statues, names of buildings, bridges, inscriptions on buildings, things like this that offend people, you know, like, you know, when we have a statue of a slave owner and, and, or serial killers or rapists and things like that. And so, I, I agree with that part. In fact, I, all my life have disliked all statues. I personally think that all statues should be demolished, no matter what political side you're on, and I think that no bridges and roads should be named after human beings. But what I'm, but my problem here with this is, it says, you got this, it has a whole list of things that discrimination, that people get threatened about or they feel wrong about, and so, we got no discrimination based on race, religion, creed, color, sex, national origin, marital status, famili, family status, domestic violence, victim status, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, honorable discharged veteran or military status, refugee status, or the presence of any sensory, mental, or physical disability. Okay, so that's the things you list. It does not say anything about political views, political viewpoints, and so, I feel that that's a gigantic loophole, begging for corruption to get it, and I feel, I feel that it's purposeful, that it doesn't say political orientation or political viewpoint, okay? Because that, this is targeted towards where, okay, if there's a statue that a Democrat or doesn't want, you're going to all be, "Okay, yeah, get rid of those statues. They, they owned a slave." But what about people who are conservative, people who are on the side of constitutional rights above anything else? That's what we should be making the laws on, not the Bible, the Constitution, all right? And so, I think this should be taken back or amended, whatever you call it, and add political orientation or political viewpoint, because this is a very liberal city, very liberal democratic city council that is, that's their viewpoint. And I have already been victimized several times for standing in front of this city council when Ben Stuckert was up there, him not liking my constitutional rights point of view, okay? And I was actually physically assaulted and hauled off. Police officers came and hauled me off for it, so you need to fix that part.
Thanks for coming down, Christine. Will Huelings, after Will's, Maigra Flatman, and Justice for All.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and again, I am a proud U.S. Navy veteran who served very honorably. Something that this C.36402 I'm against. I have been hearing a lot about this statue, John Monahan. John was a U.S. Navy hero who died serving his country. Now, I guess the reason why they want this statue taken down is because there's a word on there that says savage. So, this is how it says on the plaque. It says, it reads, "During the retreat of the Allied forces from the deadly fire and overwhelming number of savage foe, he alone stood the fearful onslaught and sacrificed his life defending a wounded comrade, Lieutenant P. V. Lansdale, United States Navy." Now, this, this, this is a veteran. This is someone that died for his country, and they made an honor, you know, like Arlington? I mean, I, that, Medical Lake? I'm a veteran. Someday, I'll be maybe buried there, maybe out in the sea, but this is just utter disrespect for people to take offense. I'm also a minority. I don't take offense to the word savage. Back in the 1800s, that was the proper term. Look it up. Savage, let's read what savage means in the current dictionary, a brutal or vicious person. So, in the 1800s, that's how they described it. So, the liberals or the Democrats want to take this statue down, just like they do all over the United States. They just renamed a military base, Fort Liberty. It used to be, I believe, Fort Bliss or Fort, but it was Confederate general, so they had to be woke and change the name. They're trying to do that even with a, a Navy vessel that I served on, because the senator was supposedly from the South, and he was supposedly racist. So, they want to disrespect me and remove the name and make it a name that they feel comfortable with. But that's what, where the society's going, and it's happening here in Spokane, and I'm not going to let it happen.
Thanks for coming down, Will. Maigra Flatman.
In Spokane, we all belong, unless we're homeless. With Cannon Street Shelter closed, the only low-barrier shelters available to adult women are at Hope House, which is full, and the inaccessiblely-distanced Trent Shelter, which is also consistently over 98% full. With no available shelter, the homeless are being criminalized for existing in the parks, and resources are being used not to shelter these Spokaneites, but to jail them. In Spokane, we all belong, unless we're people of color. Spokane County's Superior Court judges wrote a letter to the community admitting their fault in Spokane's systemic racial injustice. Quote, "It is with painful awareness that we acknowledge shortcomings that have resulted in systemic racial injustice against Black Americans and Black citizens of our state and county. It is with candid honesty that we recognize the role that the courts have played in these injustices." In Spokane, we all belong. The Court of Appeals of the State of Washington released an unpublished opinion just last month on May 11, 2023, about a Spokane Valley case. On page 56, they write, quote, "Despite the long history of bigotry and hatred towards racial minorities, despite the statistics about treatment of African-Americans in Spokane County, despite the overt racist acts in the community, despite the bigoted views of influential community members and leaders, and despite the racism exhibited by the prosecuting attorney's wife, the wheels of justice within Spokane County's white power structure blithely turn with the expectation that African-Americans will deem the criminal justice system unbiased and will quiescently bow to the authority of law enforcement courts." This court- This court has done nothing to restore confidence in the judicial system in the estimation of the Spokane African-American community." Again, Washington Court of Appeals just released this opinion last month. In Spokane, we all belong. Dr. Sandra Alt Schuler, a Spokane clinical social worker specialist, has spoken out about Spokane's racial injustice in therapeutic solution availability versus jail. Quote, "When Larry assumed office, referrals to therapeutic courts dropped significantly, and more insidiously, virtually no people of color were referred. This systemic racial discrimination has still not been corrected, and people of color are still overwhelmingly misrepresented in Spokane County Jail." In Spokane, we all belong. A great motto to live up to, but hollow words until the continued criminalization of Spokane's most vulnerable population, like those targeted by passing 36394, is not only stopped but reversed. Spokane's current policies mean that in Spokane, we don't all belong until all refers to every person, not just a privilege.
That's the end of your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, well, or thanks for sharing, I should say. All right. We're slightly past 9:30. We have two people signed up, one in person, one in phone. We had a hard time getting ahold of that person before, but moved around it out. Okay, all right. All right, Justice, welcome.
I do want to say I looked at the rules and I did not break any rules when I was sitting there. When I was being told to not do what I was doing, I was not doing anything that was against council rules. The ordinances that I support are going to be C.36401 relating to the sales and use tax of housing and housing-related support services. I also support C.36402. It's very important that we do have a tool to report. Yeah, some of these statues do need to be removed. They are, they're outdated. Fortunately, with the times, we should, we should move with the times. That's just very easy. Establishing the motto for the City of Spokane, I'm definitely against. I wish I could be as optimistic as Anwar Peace, but as I see the housing covenants that still exist, I know BIPOC Americans are not allowed to be here. When I hear the prosecutor's wife openly use the N-word against MSNBC reporter Joy Reid, I don't feel like BIPOC people are allowed to be here. When I hear Sergeant Thurman allegedly said, oh, we should go, are you ready to go hang some N-words tonight? I don't believe that BIPOC people feel comfortable to be here. When I look at the flag that was put up this month that has enough tire marks to create a new tire, I don't believe that LGBTQ or queer people are allowed to be here. When I see the ordinance you just passed, I know that young people are not allowed to be here. So I, my proposal for this ordinance is that we change it to, in Spokane, we all belong until you run out of money or you're not one of these groups. When it comes down to broadband, I believe that, again, once if we are investing public money in broadband, it should be public internet. We need better internet access for all people. This is just how data and libraries were very important to making sure that people could better themselves. Internet access is still that important connection to information. We need to make sure that people are always connected to the information so they can grow and prosper themselves. If we are, again, spending this money, we should make sure, or we should try to make sure that it becomes public. Yeah, it's been a rough, rough one today. Thanks, y'all, and, yeah.
All right, we'll try this again. We have someone signed up as Dave Mack. I'm gonna try to unmute since, okay. Is there Dave Mack out there?
This is Dennis. I think you accidentally unmuted me instead of Dave Mack.
Okay, all right, all right.
Can we unmute?
All right. All right. That brings us to the end of our evening. I forgot to do this at the front, but there is a report, June 28, Wednesday morning, 8 a.m., from the Spokane Regional Homeless Collaborative 90-day due diligence report at the Convention Center. Everyone's welcome. We'll hear from the group of what their recommendations are for governance and funding for a regional approach to homelessness. So with that, thanks, everyone, for hanging in and participating, great participation. And I, one thing I appreciate it is a lot of people didn't use their full time, and that made it a little easier to get through people within our time. Thanks, council members, for all your concern and engagement. Thanks, TV5. Thanks, council staff. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We have no meeting next Monday. We're adjourned.
Thanks for using WebEx.